Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning, everyone. My name is councillor Tony Bridges and I am the chairman of Lincolnshire County Council. Until later, it falls to me to welcome everyone to what is Lincolnshire County Council's first virtual meeting of the county council. Before we move to the business of the agenda, I just have a few procedural matters to highlight. For the benefit of the members of the public who are listening to the meeting online, if I become aware that the meeting is no longer streaming live, the meeting will be adjourned immediately. Adjourned immediately. If the public access to the meeting cannot be restored in a timely fashion, the meeting will either be reconvened at a suitable time and date, or the business will be carried forward to the next ordinary meeting of the council. A copy of today's order of proceedings can be found on the council's website. I refer members to the virtual written guidance set out on the first page of the order of proceedings. To enable the smooth running of the meeting, I will shortly propose to suspend some of the council's procedure rules. Our head of democratic services, Nigel West, will then carry out a roll call to confirm attendance in the meeting and support for the motion. In particular, to avoid numerous roll call votes and the length of time that such votes take, I propose that there will be a roll call vote on the motions on notice and otherwise that votes on other business on the agenda will be dealt with in the following way. A, I will ask if there are any councillors abstaining from the vote to indicate in the chat function, typing abstain. B, I will then ask if there are any councillors voting against the motion to indicate by typing against in the chat function. C, in the absence of any votes against, I will identify those councillors who have abstained and declare the motion carried. And D, if there are any votes against, there will be a vote by roll call. I therefore propose that the following council procedure rules be suspended for the duration of the meeting. 13.2, right of the chairman to require motion to be written down and handed to him. 15c, every proposition to be decided by voices or show of hands. 15d, where the decision of the chairman is challenged on voices, requirement to have a show of hands. And 19.1, standing to speak, rule 19.2, chairman standing. Do I have a second up?
Hi. Thank you, councillor Bridges. I'll second that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Nigel West, head of democratic services, and I will now conduct a roll call. And I will ask councillors to confirm their presence in the meeting and to respond either for, against, or abstain in the vote or suspension of procedure rules. I will ask, I will invite councillors to do that in alphabetical order. Councillor Adams.
For.
Councillor Aaron.
Present and for.
Councillor Ashton.
Present and for.
Councillor Mrs Austin.
For.
Councillor Bowles.
Present and for.
Councillor Mrs Bocket.
Present and for.
Councillor Mrs Bradwell.
Present and for.
Councillor Brailsford.
Present and for.
Councillor Bruce.
Present and for.
Councillor Bridges.
Present and for.
Councillor Brockway.
Present and for.
Councillor Brooks.
For.
Councillor Bootroyd.
Present and for.
Councillor Corey.
Present and for.
Councillor Clark. Councillor Clark. Councillor Cook.
Present and for.
Councillor Cooper. Councillor Cooper. Councillor Cullen.
Present and for.
Councillor Davie.
Present and for.
Councillor Davies.
Present and for.
Councillor Dobson.
Present and for.
Councillor Fido.
Present and for.
Councillor Fleetwood.
Present and for.
Councillor Fox.
Present and for.
Councillor Griggs.
Present and for.
Councillor Grokop.
For.
Councillor Hagues.
Present and for.
Councillor Hill.
Present and for.
Councillor Kendrick.
Present and for.
Councillor Key.
Present and for.
Councillor Kirk.
Apologies, I think, Nigel.
Thank you. Councillor Lawton. I think I've seen councillor. Thank you. Councillor Macy.
Present and for.
Councillor Marfleet.
Present and for.
Councillor Matthews.
Present and for.
Councillor Morn.
Present and for.
Councillor McNally.
Present and for.
Councillor Mrs Newton.
Present and for.
Councillor Mrs Overton.
Present and for.
Councillor Oxbey.
Present and for.
Councillor Parker.
Present and for.
Councillor Parkin.
Present and for.
Councillor Pepper.
Present and for.
Councillor Patterson-Williams.
Present and for.
Councillor Paul.
Present and for.
Councillor Mrs Rawlings.
Present and for.
Councillor Christopher Reed.
Present and for.
Councillor Robert Reed.
Present and for.
Councillor Wenshaw.
Present and for.
Councillor Rowe.
Present and for.
Councillor Skinner.
Present and for.
Councillor Mrs Sneath.
Present and for.
Councillor Spencer. Councillor Spencer. Councillor Spratt.
Present and for.
Councillor Stokes.
Present and for.
Councillor Stora.
Present and for.
Councillor Strangle.
Present and for.
Councillor Mrs Talbot.
Present and for.
Councillor Thompson.
Present and for.
Councillor Trollopee.
Present and for.
Councillor Turner.
Apologies, I think, Chair, Nigel. Oh, hold on.
Councillor Turner is here, Chair.
Brilliant. Thank you. And does he vote for or against the motion?
He for.
For. Councillor Whittington.
I'll now go away from the council.
Councillor Whittington.
Present and for.
Councillor Mrs Woolley.
Present and for.
Councillor Linda Wotton.
Present and for.
Councillor Ray Wotton.
Present and for.
Councillor Worth.
Present and for.
Councillor Young.
Present and for.
Councillor Clark, are you present?
I've just had a message that councillor Clark seems to have been cut off, Chairman. I think he's trying to get in.
Oh, he's, he's just messaged in the meeting chat that he's here now. So councillor, and do you vote for or against?
Present and for.
Thank you. And councillor Cooper. The meeting chat suggests that councillor Cooper has joined the meeting. Councillor Cooper? Fine. Chair, Chairman, that vote is carried.
Thank you very much. We now come on to item one, which is the election of the chairman of the county council for 2020, 2021. I will now invite nominations for the election of chairman. Please can I have nominations for chairman? Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Hill here. I would like to propose that your current vice chairman, councillor, councillor Brooks, be appointed chairman for the ensuing, what's left of the ensuing civic year. I've known Mike a long time and obviously he's a longstanding and very well-respected councillor for the Boston area. He's been a very effective member of this council and has chaired various committees very ably. And also he had a prominent role at Boston Borough Council while he was a member there as well. So it gives a great pleasure and I think he will do an excellent job for us. So I would like to propose Mike Brooks as the next chairman. Thank you. Thank you very much indeed. Is there a second up?
Yes.
Please state your name.
Councillor Austin.
And are you seconding this nomination?
I am seconding it.
Thank you.
Can I say a few words?
Please do.
Thank you for this opportunity to second the nomination of councillor Michael Brooks as vice chair, as chairman of this council. When I was elected to Boston Borough Council in 2007, councillor Brooks was my first mayor. It's always pleasing to see someone from Boston being recognised within the county. In the time that I've been on the county council, Mike and I have had divisions which interlock to share the parish of Kirkton. During this time, I have consulted Mike on many occasions and he has frequently acted as my mentor. I know how fair and professional that he always is and he will make an excellent chairman of this council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other nominations? Can I ask if there are any councillors abstaining? Please type abstain in the meeting chat. If there are any councillors who wish to vote against, please type against into the meeting chat now. I have not received any indication of anyone wishing to vote against, therefore the motion is carried unanimously. Congratulations councillor Michael Brooks, and you are now able to take over the chair from me.
Thank you. They're only calling past chair, little, thank you, councillor Bridges. Members of the council, may I take this opportunity to thank my proposed and seconded councillor Martin Hill, who has chaired our own sub council, along with all the members who have supported my nomination as chairman of the county council. I would like to see address during my term of office as chairman, please. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank our outgoing chairman, councillor Tony Bridges, and his good lady Trina for their good work during their term of office. They have been incredible ambassadors for the county and represented Lincolnshire with distinction. It has been a privilege and a pleasure for my good lady Jackie and myself to be included in their term of office. It is so disappointing that the COVID-19 pandemic has taken away the last few weeks of their tenure, which I know both were looking forward to immensely. Perth Jackie and myself are very much looking forward to my civic term of office. I hope, once government guidelines allow, to visit as many people and organisations within Lincolnshire as I am able, and I shall wear the chain of office with pride and represent Lincolnshire County Council to the best of my ability. The last few weeks during the coronavirus outbreak has been unlike anything we have ever known, and we have all witnessed the devastating loss of lives. We have had to embrace a new way of living and this has proved difficult for many of us, young and old, particularly those of us who have had to stay away from our loved ones. The response by people in Lincolnshire and the way key workers, carers and communities have rallied round to help those who need it has been wonderful to see. I've been heartened to see how the county council members and officers, along with partner organisation, have come together to support services that have been so desperately needed throughout the pandemic. I have heard wonderful stories of people going the extra mile and embracing the challenges they have faced in order to maintain and uphold the high level of support to their services. I shall be, I will be supporting the recovery from this terrible virus wherever I can during my term of office. And my chosen charities for the year will be the Lincolnshire and Nottinghamshire Air Ambulance and Lives. Thank you. Now, I need to move on to the next item on the agenda. Not the next, I would invite any other members who would wish to speak about the outgoing chairman and request that you type speak in the meeting chat. I've got councillor Martin Hill as the first person to respond. Councillor Hill.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'd just like to thank the outgoing chairman, Tony Turner, for all the work he did over this, this past year. And obviously, as you've said, it has been very difficult at the last quarter of his tenure as chairman and, but throughout the whole year, he's been a perfect gentleman and a really excellent chairman of the county council, both in the meetings and out. I know when the opportunity was there, he did a fantastic job in making sure that he represented the council very well and did a lot of work in terms of promoting the new skills agenda, which we are, very important job for us all. So he's done it very well and I'm very pleased that he's volunteered to not give up entirely his roles with the chains and will hopefully be the vice chairman to support you as you have supported him. So that's all I wish to say, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Have we any other speakers on this? No, I don't, we have no one indicating. Sorry, can I? Yes, of course. And, yeah, and I just wanted to, again, sort of pay tribute to councillor Bridges, who, I know for me as well with, you know, I've come to him with a couple of things over the year and he's always been, you know, very supportive of me in my first term of office and as a, as a young councillor as well. So I wanted to sort of personally say for myself, you know, thank you for the last year councillor Bridges. Thank you for that. Thank you. I've also, councillor Parker indicated. Councillor Parker.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to compliment councillor Bridges on his work as, as chair of the county council over the last year. I think he's conducted the, the business mainly of the full council in an affable, friendly manner, got through the business pretty well, no major problems, and has done it in a way that's been inclusive. From the opposition point of view, the stature of the chair of the council is determined not so much by the good things it's done, but by the absence of problems. And I think that Tony Bridges has done well in avoiding any issues coming before the full council that could have made life difficult for all members. So thanks for your year, Tony.
Thank you councillor Parker. Our next speaker, councillor Angela Newton. Councillor Newton.
You're on mute. Sorry. Thank you. I'd like to echo the nice things that have been said about councillor Bridges. He's done a wonderful job for this council and represented us with dignity and pride. And when he's been in my area in South Holland, he's really done a good job and been a brilliant ambassador all the time for the council. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Newton. I've had councillor Bruce's name put in front of me, but I believe that Chris has already spoken. Councillor Bruce, you've already spoken, have you? No, no, I just wanted to first congratulate you and also say that as the most distant member in the county, to thank Tony very much when he's come down here, how much his presence has been appreciated and what a fantastic ambassador he's been for our whole county when he's come to the far south-eastern corner. Thank you, Chair. Thank you councillor Bruce. I don't think, I don't think I've got anybody else indicating to speak. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, agenda item two, which is the election of vice chairman of the county council. And I would like to nominate councillor Tony Bridges, our outgoing chairman. I've spoken previously about the exemplary way that councillor Tony Bridges, as chairman, and his good lady Trina have carried out their duties in the preceding 14 months, and how much Jackie and myself have enjoyed working with them. I'm therefore extremely pleased that Tony has agreed to be nominated as my vice chairman and therefore would like to formally move the councillor Tony Bridges be elected vice chairman of the county council for 2020, 21. Have I a second up? I think councillor Mrs Bradwell is going to second this.
Yes, I am, Mr Chairman. I have great pleasure in seconding councillor Bridges to be your vice chairman for the coming year. As people have said, Tony's been an exemplar chairman of the council and I'm sure he and Trina will support you in all the things that you'll have to do over the coming 12 months. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bradwell. Right, we, we need to conduct a vote on that now. Is there, are there any abstentions on this vote for the vice chairmanship? Any abstentions?
Yes. Councillor Parker has abstained.
We have one abstention, which is councillor Parker. And are there any against?
Councillor Parkin has also abstained.
And councillor Parkin has already, has also abstained. Are there any against?
Councillor Clark has also abstained.
Councillor Clark has also abstained. I probably ought to have just waited a second to get the abstentions. Are there any more abstentions?
Yes, councillor Wenshaw.
Councillor Wenshaw, apparently. And councillor Wenshaw. Yeah, I think there's just a delay in them coming through. I do apologise. So we've got those four abstentions so far. Are there any more? No, I'll take that as no. Right, could I have those who are, anyone against, to please indicate in the chat?
So we're communicating with each other there and the officers are communicating with us there?
I have none, nobody indicating against? Okay, I therefore, with the four abstentions which I've, I've read out, conclude that that vote is carried. So congratulations, Tony, councillor Bridges. You'll be my vice chairman for the coming year. And thank you for agreeing to do that, Tony. Thank you. Right, I will now state that before moving on to the, before moving on to the rest of the agenda, I have some procedural matters of my own. Due to the length of today's agenda, if necessary, I intend to adjourn the meeting for 30 minutes at 1pm. As members are unable to view the electronic clock, I will be timing the speeches and will indicate when your time is almost up. However, I do expect some level of self-regulation by members in terms of their speeches. Normal time limits will still apply. Finally, I propose to change the order of business on the agenda and take agenda item 12 before agenda item 11, as I believe that they, that they run into each other better and follow on better in that way. So what I need to do is to, is to take a vote on that. I mean, agenda item 12 is political balance on committees and subcommittees, and agenda item 11 is appointment of chairman and vice chairman of committees. And it just seems logical that the political balance comes before the appointment of chairman and vice chairman. So that's the reason for that. Have I a second up for that proposal? I believe councillor Bridges is going to second me on that.
Councillor, you need to put your mic on.
I will be pleased to second, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Thank you for that. Can I ask now then for, are there any councillors abstaining on this, this proposal? If you, if you are, please type abstain in the meeting chat. No abstentions? Are there any councillors who wish to vote against this proposal? Please type against into the meeting chat now. None against, so therefore that is carried and we'll swap those agenda items round. Thank you, everyone, for that. Right, on to agenda item three now, which is the apologies for absence. Can I ask, no, well, to announce any apologies, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I have apologies from councillor Coopland, councillor Killie and councillor Kirk.
Thank you, Nigel. Thank you for that. So we'll, we'll move on to item number four, declaration of councillors' interests. Councillors should indicate if they have an interest they would like to declare by typing speak in the chat function, and that's obviously interests that haven't been declared on your DPI disclosure of pecuniary interest forms. So is there anybody wishing to declare any other interests? No, there isn't, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the minutes of the meeting of the county council held on the 21st of February 2020. That, and I move that the minutes of the meeting of the county council held on the 21st of February 2020 be approved as a correct record and signed by the chairman. Can I ask if there are any councillors abstaining? To please type abstain in the meeting chat, and I'll just give a few moments for that to happen.
Mr Chairman, I think you've missed my speech as the outgoing chairman.
I do apologise councillor Bridges. I, best laid answer. Can I say the title then? And I'll come back to that. Thank you for that. I do apologise.
Okay, no worries, a learning curve.
Yeah, first mistake. But can I, can I ask if any councillors abstaining? Please type abstain in the meeting chat. I don't think we've got any abstentions, so if we could move on to any councillors who wish to vote against, please indicate in the, in the meeting chat now. So, if we could move on to any councillors who wish to vote against, please indicate in the meeting chat now. No, there's no one against. So, the, we receive no abstentions or any votes against. So, I conclude that that item is carried. They agreed the minutes of the meeting of the last meeting. Now, I do apologise to my vice chairman not giving him the opportunity to speak on his chairmanship. So, I will go back to councillor Tony Bridges now on that. Over to you, councillor Bridges.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Firstly, I would like to thank Trina, my partner of nine years, for supporting me in most of my civic functions. I would also like to thank councillor Mike Brooks and Jackie for supporting Trina and I and for standing in for us when he had been unavailable. Thank you also to the Reverend Brian Roberts, who has led us in prayer during my term of office. Thank you also, Sue, to councillor Martin Hill, leader of this council, for proposing me and councillor Colin Davy for seconding my nomination. I thank Rachel Wallace for all the hard work she's put in supporting me. Being elected as chairman a year last May was joyful to me because my daughter, who lives in Tasmania and my son, who lives in Cambridgeshire, were both present to see me inducted into the chair of Lincolnshire County Council. As the months passed, I visited lots of places up and down Lincolnshire and Trina and I will take away lots of happy memories. As you know, my theme for the year was skills and it was a delight to visit so many schools and colleges to see skills being provided. I'll be handing over a cheque for just over eleven hundred pounds to the British Heart Foundation, my chosen charity, and I would like to thank all those who contributed. This because my brother died at the age of forty seven of a heart attack. In conclusion, I would like to wish councillor Mike Brooks and Jackie all the very best in their year of office. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bridges. Thank you for that. And again, apologies for missing that point on the agenda. Right, we move on then to item number six now, which is chairman's chaplain. I intend to announce this in due course. Once it has been finalised, we're still working on the details of that. So, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is chairman's announcements. It is with great sadness that I have to report the death of county councillor Lewis Strange. Lewis was elected to the county council in June 2001 and represented the Uncombe Cliff Electoral Division until fourth of May 2017, when he was elected to represent Market Raisin Walts Electoral Division following a boundary review. A former portfolio holder for cultural services, councillor Strange served as executive councillor for waste between May 2005 and May 2013. He was chairman of both the environmental scrutiny committee and the flood and drainage management scrutiny committee between May 2013 and May 2017. A great champion of the countryside, councillor Strange served on the local access forum for many years, as well as being a longstanding member of the Lincolnshire Walts Joint Advisory Committee. In May 2017, he was appointed chairman of the council's definitive map and public rights of way subcommittee. Lewis was a popular character and a great friend to many. He will be sadly missed. We've also all seen the devastating effects of Covid nineteen and the loss of life here in Lincolnshire, across the country and across the world. Can I ask that members observe a silent tribute to the late councillor Strange and to remember those Lincolnshire people who have lost their lives to coronavirus in recent months? Can I now ask the virtual chamber to observe a minute's silence?
Councillor, your mic is off.
Sorry. I know, I have a list of people who wish to speak to pay tribute to councillor Strange. If you have not submitted a request to speak in advance but wish to speak, please indicate by typing speak in the, in the chat, in the meeting chat. I just wanted to say a few personal words about Lewis myself. Lewis made me so very welcome when I first came on to the council and he always had a friendly word and often a funny story until when we met. He helped me greatly in those early years with a couple of issues in my division and also at Boston Borough Council, which came within his executive councillor's remit. A member of Kirkton Parish Council who he met with me said, Lewis really listened to us. And I would say, add into that, that he then acted positively on those concerns, but it was noted the way he acted and listened by those people. I also enjoyed being a member of the environmental and flood and drainage management scrutiny committees, which he chaired with great knowledge and passion. I will remember Lewis not only as a very good councillor, but a lovely, friendly man, a real gentleman with a great sense of humour. I'm now going to hand over to councillor Tony Bridges, who I believe has indicated to speak. Councillor Bridges. You're muted, Tony. You're muted.
Is that better? I first met Lewis when I was nine and he was eight at St Hugh's School in Woodhall Spa. I could see that in those days, that he wasn't a sportsman as such, but he was very affable. And we didn't renew friendships again until I was elected to this wonderful Lincoln County Council in 2013. Lewis became a friend, a great friend, until his passing, which was very sad to me because he was also very helpful to me throughout my Lincoln County Council career. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Bridges. I now move on to councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you, chairman. I will be relatively brief because I do know there are a lot of people who want to pay tribute to Lewis, so which probably speaks as much about the man as anything else. As you stated, chairman, he had a long and distinguished career at the county council, including being on my executive for eight years as the executive member for waste. I think personally, all the jobs he did at the county council, he did to the best of his ability in a friendly manner, but he was passionate not only about Lincolnshire, where he's from of course, but also about this county council doing a good job for Lincolnshire. And indeed, I believe the same, was the same on West Lindsay District Council, which he was also a member. As far as to describe Lewis, if you imagine the perfect country gentleman who was a county councillor, probably Lewis would probably spring to your mind. And he very much was Lincolnshire through and through, passionate about this county. And as we said, passionate about the Walts, but always at the bottom of everything he did, he just felt that he should do the best for Lincolnshire. And was an ultimate gentleman and I think a lot of people will sadly miss him. That's all I'm going to say, chairman, but as yourself, it's a very sad day. He had been a little bit unwell, but I think was confident that he would recover, but alas, he didn't. So, a very heartfelt thank, some goodbye to councillor Lewis Strange.
Thank you, councillor Hill. I've got councillor Parker, who has indicated that he'd like to speak. Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, my contact with Lewis was on an almost a non-political basis, like I'm sure it was with a lot of people. I mean, one of the things that, we talked about national politics, local politics, but it was always done in a way that where we never fell out and came together on more occasions than people might accept. Sport was another thing that Lewis had a history about and a mention was being made of hockey. And we could talk about cricket. His son still continues that tradition as a cricketer. But I think one of the things that doesn't remind me at the moment is that cricket's not one of the sports that's been brought back. And I really think to myself, what would, what would Lewis make of the idea of cricket not being brought back because of the idea that it can't somehow be played when other sports can? And I'm sure we'd have had a discussion about that. Easygoing, charming, you know, warm, humane, got along with people from all backgrounds. The sort of person that you wouldn't mind having a chat about anything about. And that's what stood out. His personality was one of being friendly. Farming background, yes, he talked about and helped me to understand a bit more about what happens in our rural county. And he's the sort of person that, you know, you would always find ten, fifteen minutes for a chat when he was working in the members' room on his own. IT skills have often helped with and that tells you a lot about Lewis's IT skills, couldn't, me helping him. But yes, he's one of the councillors that I really will miss and it's a sad day for Lincolnshire.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Councillor Angela Newton is next on my list. Councillor Newton.
Thank you, chairman. I think those of us, whenever we were new into the county council, Lewis was always a friend. I remember him coming up, it didn't matter who you were and it didn't matter where you sat in the chamber. Lewis was always welcoming, how are you, my dear? And how are things in your neck of the woods? Always took a great interest in what was going on. I remember sitting next to him in Lincoln Cathedral one day and there wasn't many of us county councillors. And we got talking about cricket, as Rob mentions. So every time we saw him, he wanted to know where we'd been on a cricket tour and what was happening. I shall miss him because he was somebody, didn't matter what time of the day you passed him in the corridor, in the members' room, he was always the same and he was Lincolnshire through and through. He was a good guy. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Newton. Councillor Tricia Bradwell. Councillor Bradwell.
Yes, I'm here, Mr Chairman. It just takes me a little while to press that button. Yes, well, obviously I knew Lewis very well. He went on the executive when I joined the executive. And as people have said, he was a true gentleman. His previous life, he was a farmer, he had restaurants, he'd done an all manner of things. But I think his greatest love was Lincolnshire. He championed Lincolnshire. And I remember when we had the Walts walks, he was always there walking the Walts. I think also, his second love was cricket and obviously his son used to join him. I know he used to spend many an hour in the summer at Trent Bridge. You know, if you wanted him, you always knew in the summer if Trent Bridge, there's cricket there, Lewis would be there. And he will be a sad loss, I think, to the residents who he represented because he was highly thought of by the people he represented. And I used to have many a chat with him. He often used to come and see me about his scores and all sorts. So he will be a sad loss and our thoughts must go to his family, who will really miss him. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bradwell. I now have councillor Hugo Marfleet indicated. Councillor Mar.
Thank you, chairman, and congratulations on your position.
Thank you.
Lewis, I've known all the time since I've been on the county council. I found not only was he a true gentleman, he was a yellow belly, he had a great sense of humour and could talk for England. I could imagine him as a farmer leant on the gatepost, talking, but time goes past. But he was always very funny, very friendly with my father and so many in the local area that he was friends with. Wherever I go, people spoke very highly of him. And I think, and I'd also just sort of, like to just sort of wish his partner, Mo, all the best as well because he spent a lot of time coming over to my ward to see his partner, my division. And, but no, he was a really, truly a nice gentleman. Not a bad word to say about anyone and all the best for Lincolnshire and he will be missed and thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marfleet. I now have councillor Chris Brewis. Councillor Brewis. Councillor Brewis.
Sorry. Sorry, chairman. Thank you very much. When I arrived for my, when I was first elected, three weeks late because I'd already arranged a holiday, the first person I met was Lewis Strange. Wasn't I lucky? And he had such a wide knowledge of so many things. He also used to enjoy holidays in Dunster, which I know very well in Somerset, and was an occasion, even a member of Somerset Cricket Club. And we thought on occasions in distant past, we'd probably been at the ground at the same time. I learnt so much from him over the years as a councillor. He was so knowledgeable and such a genuinely nice, friendly and thoroughly pleasant man to know. I have my complete sympathy to all his nearest and dearest and we shall miss him a great deal. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Brewis. Councillor Robin Renshaw.
Thank you, chairman. Congratulations on your election as chairman.
Thank you.
As a member of this council for many, many years, I never thought I'd ever say that. I thanked Lewis for his kind and human manner towards me in particular. He was impartial in all his ways, kind and considerate in all matters and he will be sadly missed. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Renshaw. Councillor Claire Perrott and Williams.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to say a few words because Lewis covered my division before I, or some of it, before I got it. And he was a very, it was big boots to fill. He was a lovely, lovely man. I was so lucky to have him as my, or to succeed him. He was always there to help me. Any questions I needed to ask, he was always there. And I know I'm definitely, I'm seriously going to miss him, especially seeing him in the exec office of a morning where I used to stand and have a chat. And I know a lot of my parishes have also missed him and send their good wishes to his family. So it was just a quick message to say that, really. He'll be definitely missed.
Thank you, councillor Perrott and Williams. Thank you. Right, councillor Bowles.
Thank you, chairman, and congratulations on your appointment as well. I just wanted to quickly pay my respects to Lewis. Obviously knew Lewis as both a county councillor and a West Lindsay councillor. We first met before I was actually elected on to either of those two councils when I was mayor of Gatesborough. And what I found amazing about Lewis was, you know, we was, you know, worlds apart probably in terms of politics and age, but we just seemed to hit it off, you know, on so many different levels, like most people have alluded to. Lewis would just come and have a chat with you every time you saw him. You could guarantee you were greeted with a handshake. First question would be, how's the family? Second question to me would always be, how's things at Gatesborough Trinity? So that just sort of broke the ice every time you saw him was that. And again, I just, you know, from my partner Katie as well, she always felt when we was at events, Lewis would not only come along and speak to me, he'd engage with her. And I think it just goes to show, you know, along and speak to me, engage with her. And I think it just goes to show, you know, mark of what a gentleman he was. So we'd just like to pay our respects. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bowles. Councillor Sneath, councillor Elizabeth Sneath.
Good morning and congratulations Chairman on your election. I hope you have a wonderful year despite the coronavirus. I first met Lewis when I was elected in 2013 and he soon became a dear friend. He always said that my own late father, a former councillor, had taken him under his wing when he was elected in 2001. We've always sat on Environment and Economy together and lately on Adults. He was the epitome of all that is good and honourable in a traditional English country gentleman, kind, courteous and wise, but always with a twinkle in his eye. His depth of knowledge and love of the wals will be much missed on the many committees he sat on. And most importantly, he was a loving and proud father and grandfather, will be much missed by us all. May he rest in peace. Thank you Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Sneath. Councillor Tom Ashton.
Thank you very much Mr Chairman. Congratulations as well on your appointment to the chair and I wish you a very good year in the county council. I would simply say very briefly that Lewis was incredibly kind and welcoming to a new county councillor a few years ago. Farmers in politics are all too few and it was always good to exchange views and experiences throughout the agricultural calendar. I would simply say that Lewis was a trudge in Lincolnshire gentleman who will be missed, especially by me and I'm sure by all.
Thank you. Councillor Overton, councillor Marion Overton.
Thank you very much indeed Chairman. Congratulations and I hope you have a good year because it will mean that we have a good year. I just wanted to raise a couple of things to say. A huge respect for councillor Lewis Strange. He gave respect and he gained respect and he really appreciated people. I think he cared enormously about Lincolnshire, yes, and about his family, perhaps most of all. And he cared about people and that I think is what shone through. He was, as you say, always, always good tempered, always excellent to speak to, great conversationalist. And somehow I think each of us felt that we had a special relationship with him and that is an incredible skill, but it's also a gift. And I think it's a real gift that was part of his good qualities. I'm very sorry to lose him. And I think he always said, you have to juggle on with everyone because life's too short to do any difference. And for him, it certainly was. He was always very proud of his lovely family and I know they will be carrying on his good qualities for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Right councillor Nigel Pepper I have next. And just apologies if people are getting anxious that they haven't been called to speak yet. You can imagine I've got a long list of people indicated that they want to say something and I can quite understand that. So just, if you could just bear with me please. Councillor Nigel Pepper.
Okay. Thank you Chairman and congratulations from me. Coronavirus aside, I mean, had this morning's meeting been in the council chamber, there would have been an empty seat at the side of me. Lewis and myself sat side by side at full council. This softly spoken gentleman sort of became my unofficial mentor, I suppose, as he was always offering tips and advice. He was always fair and professional and things had to be done correctly. He had frequently tut tut under his breath, or I think the word was dear, dear, when something was not to his liking, no matter which political party or officer that said it. Cricket, I'm not too much of a follower of the sport, but I had to hear all about it at every meeting. I just, I just went along with it. But his passion for the wals is what would always shine through more than anything else. So a final goodbye from me to my honourable and gentleman friend that was on my right. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pepper. Right councillor Richard Bitteroid.
Thank you Chairman. Lewis was always very kind to me. I think that's come through from what everyone said this morning. He was a big part of making me feel welcome when I first got, you know, involved in politics from a party point of view. He was a great supporter of all the events and local events that we all put on. He was sort of the life and soul of the party, always very friendly. He would look to help anyone. He would always be there to give advice and to point you in the right direction. And I think he was, you know, there for everyone and I think we all are going to miss him very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Right councillor Alison Austin.
Thank you Chairman. My tribute, my husband Richard, who as a member of this county council, worked quite a lot with Lewis as the portfolio holder for Wastes. I'm making a very simple tribute. By reading the century, what I wrote almost within minutes of reading the letter to us all, the email to us all from Vanessa. It's a very personal tribute. What sad news. He was so fond of Lewis and he was such a kind man. For all my time at LCC, I've been on the same committees as him on which he chairs for my first term. I shall never forget the trip that we had to look at chalk streams on the wals. I'm sure you will miss him terribly. It will leave a big hole in our council lives, as of course in your own. He was always a perfect gentleman. I can still hear his voice saying councillor Mrs Watson. I sincerely hope it had a peaceful end. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Austin. Councillor Colin Davy.
Thank you Chairman. So much has been said already, but for me warmth and kindness shone out of Lewis. On the first day I met him back in 2005, he was always a gentleman. His kindness always shone through, not just to me, but to my wife Vanessa. I'm going to miss him dreadfully. He was a great friend, a friend to all of us. I worked closely with him from 2013 when he was chair of a couple of the committees that I looked after in my portfolio. We had a fantastic understanding of the way things needed to be done and we progressed so well together. I will miss him. Every single day I will miss him because as has already been said, the warmth and kindness of the man, his passion for Lincolnshire, for his children, for the wals in particular, for that part of West Lindsay, he was very proud to represent. He was a great councillor, a great friend to many of us and we will all miss him dreadfully as we go forward. And finally on COVID-19, it is right that we do reflect on those that have lost their lives in Lincolnshire over the last few months. We're not out of the woods yet, so we always must remain vigilant. And this meeting today is testament to the vigilance we must endure with. On that note, Lewis was a wonderful man and we're all missing.
Thank you councillor Davy. Councillor Sue Woolley. Sue.
Thank you Chairman. I'm starting where Colin's finished. What a wonderful man. Lewis was so very kind to me when I first joined the council and we whelled it over Trent Bridge and Tolsoth, cricket and Shakespeare. God bless you Lewis. I'm going to miss you dreadfully.
Thank you. Thank you for that Sue. Thank you. Councillor Kay.
Thank you Chairman and congratulations on your position.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, knowing Lewis, he was way back before I managed to get on the council. I knew him from West Lindsay. Been 20 years at West Lindsay. And I remember meeting him for the first time in the corridors there and he had the time to stop and speak. And he asked for my name and I tell him. And 20 years after, each time he still remembered my name, it wasn't, you know, he was a gentleman to the extreme and he'd be missed, sadly missed by his family and that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Councillor Barry Dobson.
Congratulations Chairman. Thank you. Lewis was a great personality, a really engaged and valuable member of the Environment and Economy Committee. He never failed to greet me with a warm smile, calling me chairman rather than my name, even after I had long left that role. He was such a gentleman, a dedicated councillor, and I will, like many of us and many of his other colleagues, miss him greatly. I send my sincere condolences to his family. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for that councillor Dobson. Councillor Mark Whittington, sorry.
Thank you very much indeed Mr Chairman and many congratulations on your action as chairman.
Thank you.
My first, my first memories of Lewis are really from when I joined the council in 2015 and my very first full council in September of that year when a very nervous young councillor, not quite sure what to expect. And Lewis was one of the first people to come up to me and shake my hand and ask, want to know my name and where I was. It's been said, he was a perfect charming gentleman, the personification of an English gentleman, the great sense of humour, always with a witty story to tell, especially regarding his great loves of Lincolnshire and cricket. It has been mentioned in the announcements of all the service he did to this, for the county. He was for many, many years the Lincolnshire County Council representative to the Rural Services Network. And he served on that body, as I said, for many years. When he was felt unable to carry on with that role, I succeeded him as the county councillor rep. And every time I attended a Rural Services Network meeting, one of the first things people, councillors all over the country would come to me and say, you're from Lincolnshire, how's Lewis? They always wanted to know. And that I think is a true mark of who Lewis was. Everybody, even many years after he left the RSN, still wanted to know how he was. And I know that they will sorely miss him. My last memory of Lewis, it was in the canteen of the county council just before lockdown. And the first thing he asked me was, what's going on at the Rural Services Network? So even after leaving as the rep, he was still interested in it and what was going on. I will miss him greatly. I want to extend my sympathy to his family. Lewis, you were a great mate and thanks very much and God bless you. Thank you.
Right councillor Rawlins. Councillor Rawlins.
Thank you Mr Chairman and congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
Just want to briefly say how much I loved and admired Lewis. I met him many years ago when I first joined West Lindsay District Council. We went through some troubled times sometimes together, but he was always a peacemaker with humour and dignity. And I will remember Lewis fondly for the rest of my life, as will my daughter, who he always, always asked after and made an awful lot of it whenever we met. So I will be sadly sad for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Eddie Poll.
Thank you Chairman. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. One of my, as many of you know, I've been on the council quite a while now. But one of my happiest memories was driving Lewis and our other senior member councillor Turner, Tony Turner, I'm very pleased to see here today, driving them around the walls, visiting various sites of under our control and within our portfolios. And the two of them sat in the back talking about just about everything imaginable. And the joshing and the banging going on was absolutely memorable and I thank them both for that. But what I'd like to say really today is about my friend Lewis. I'd like to thank his family for sharing him with us and I'd like to thank him for everything he did for us. Goodbye Lewis.
Thank you. Thank you Eddie. Right councillor Paula Cooper I've got next on the list. Councillor. No, I haven't. I don't think, Paul is not responding. Councillor Cooper is not responding. So councillor Christine Talbot. I might have, these names have been, is it Christine Norton? Christine. Christine.
Chairman, she didn't ask to speak.
Right, I'm sorry. And I'd also got councillor Spencer on this list that's been given to me, but I don't know, I don't think councillor Spencer was present, was he? Doesn't appear. So I'll move on then. I've got councillor Worth. Councillor Nick Worth. Nick.
Thank you Chairman. Just like, just like to say, as one or two have today, when I used to go in the office, first thing Lewis would always say, say to me is, how are you? How's your family? How's your brother? And then he would ask me about Gatesborough Old Hall and give me a bit of a hard time about that. So I always, I always used to like Lewis. He was great. We talked a lot about sport, quite obviously. I was honestly not in his era, but my older brother was. And I know I used to hear of a number of occasions when his, he used to get tackled fairly ruthlessly by Lewis. He used to play at the back. And I know my brother's got quite a number of bruises on his shins now today, still to mark those events. So we will miss him. He was a great gentleman and I will certainly miss his presence with us. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you councillor Worth. Thank you for that. Right, I haven't got anybody else indicating to speak as far as I know, all angles. So as you might appreciate on this, as so many people wanted to speak, but if I've missed anybody, could you just say please? I don't think I have. I'm going to move on. Obviously, I mean, the warmth and love that has been expressed for Lewis, it's quite obvious from the way everybody has spoken. And we are going to miss him greatly. So without any more said, I'm going to move on. Thank you for all, for your contributions to that. Right, I'm going to move on now to the next item on the agenda, which is item eight, which is the leader to report on executive port. Thank you Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Should be very brief. There are no proposing any changes to the executive portfolios for the executive support councillors. No change there.
Thank you Martin. Thank you councillor Hill. Right, item nine, announcements by the leader and members of the executive. And I'm going to go to councillor Hill first, to Martin, the leader. Well, I've got five minutes each here, so I'm going to keep it to five minutes and time everyone, if that's okay. So over to you Martin. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. A different format this time. I think it'd be appropriate for all of the executive just to update the council in person about what's been going on. And obviously we have been doing a lot of work and making sure all council members and indeed partners are in partners are informed of progress. It's certainly been a very different year this year. I think it was quite a lot of turmoil after last year's AGM. We had a new prime minister, we had all the hoo-ha over and the comings and goings over, was it Brexit or not Brexit and so and so forth. Then of course we had the general election and a new government came in, Brexit was, well, the deal was done in terms of the divorce, if not Brexit. And we thought then Christmas out of the way, then things would settle down and business as usual. Of course it was anything but because in March, of course, we then entered, February, March, we entered the period of coronavirus outbreak and it's been a massive change, not only for the people of Lincolnshire and the people of this country, but also of course for this council. I'd certainly like to thank all the council staff and all the council members for dealing so ably and aptly with the massive change which has been forced upon us. And as part of that change, I'm also very proud to say that services have continued. Certainly those vital important services that we all, our public need, have all carried on in pretty much good order, although we have actually had to stop some of the less essential services and those services which we didn't have to do, for example, household recycling centres. But more about that from the portfolio holders. But I'm very pleased that the services have continued, but also we've picked up all those other things that needed to be done in terms of making sure that our Lincolnshire response to COVID nineteen was as strong as possible. We have been helped of course by the low outbreak numbers in the county. So the infection rate in Lincolnshire has just been stated about hundred and fifty cases per one hundred thousand people, whereas the England average was two seven six per hundred thousand. So we are half the rate of other parts of the country. Of course, we mustn't forget that sadly one hundred and forty-one people in Lincolnshire have lost their lives and that's the area of the Lincolnshire hospitals. There will be others who are serviced by Peterborough Hospital, but one hundred and forty-one people have lost their lives. And we think about just nearly twelve hundred people, as we know of, have been infected with COVID nineteen. A lot of work, obviously working with the district councils in terms of supporting businesses, supporting individuals, supporting those people who are shielding and indeed supporting those volunteers who are all doing that unofficial, vital unpaid work to do that. So I think it's a credit to all our staff and to our councillors as well. In terms of schools, over three thousand and sixty pupils have attended schools each day up to the end of May and wider careful reopening of schools has seen seventeen thousand pupils return to schools to date. There is some hope there and I'm certainly personally hope that the government and the schools actually make sure that all our schools are up and running properly by September because I think that's really important in terms of the wellbeing, particularly those less vulnerable, those more vulnerable children. So we are ready now, we are ready for the local outbreaks. Now the national position has moved from nationally that it will be dealt with outbreaks to the local, the outbreaks will be dealt with locally. So there has been a local outbreak engagement board set up, which I chair and with colleagues from other organisations. And the idea is working with our director of public health, Derek, that they will advise as if there is a local outbreak which needs more work to be done in terms of local isolation and indeed making sure that we are ready to step up if hopefully, if very sadly there is a local outbreak. So we will be set up to deal with that, touch wood, let's hope we'll go on. Of course, the other thing just to say is also thank you to councillors who have all been given some money so that we can give to voluntary groups, three thousand pounds each and that fund is going very well and I'm sure the local people appreciate all the extra support they've got. So it's been a really challenging time, but I'm very pleased to report that, very proud that the council has stepped up to the challenge and delivered very well in a very sensible and pragmatic way, as you would expect from a Lincolnshire county council. Thank you chairman.
Thank you. Right councillor, Mrs Bradwell.
Yeah, just coming. Thank you mister chairman. Well, I just want to cover some of my area in adults and childrens. And firstly, about the vast majority of Lincolnshire schools have remained open to vulnerable children and key workers. And over the last couple of weeks, we've seen increasing numbers as the leader has just mentioned, with three hundred and twenty-four schools now reopened with reception year one six and then secondary ten and twelve. And we have had four cases of the virus in our schools since they opened, but these are, appear to be isolated cases and obviously we, public health have been working with those schools. We continue to work closely with schools to help them maintain a safe environment and support a phased return for pupils over the coming months. We've obviously, as many of you will know, we've been, schools are supporting online learning, but we do know that many children will have lost many hours of education and this is a huge concern. So I was delighted that the government announced a one billion funding to help children catch up and obviously they'll be working with schools to actually get that funding to help the children in the most effective way. I was also pleased that the government have also going to provide food vouchers for our families because they are really needed in the summer holidays and with the situation we're in, I think that will really help families. And then finally, on education, it's just to say to colleagues that we are working with the LECC and colleges and schools to support those children, young people who thought they were going on to apprenticeship and further education and, you know, we will be ensuring that they get the support they need during these very difficult times. Social distancing courses are a huge problem with school transport and we have asked parents to take their children to school where there's possible. At the moment, we're only transporting twelve hundred students where it's usually eighteen thousand. So you can see how many families have wanted to take their children to school. But it is, you know, we will have a real issue going back to school and getting sufficient vehicles if we get larger numbers wanting to go back and school transport services are looking at that. And quickly, just on health visitors, our health visitors have continued to visit families of newborns and that. And we're school nurse, our nurses have been providing help for families whose children are shielding. We've got lots of disabled children now who are having to shield. So the nurses have transferred to really supporting those families at home. With regards adult care, obviously we've heard a lot in the news about care homes, but our staff at the county council have really been having a close working relationship with care homes because obviously we were in a pandemic situation and the support we've given them in getting them PPE and helping them with training in their homes for infection prevention and control, their nursing homes have really valued that help that they've been given from our staff. We've established a COVID community response partnership and that works with district councils and our wellbeing service to target support to Lincolnshire residents who are clinically or extremely vulnerable to the NHS. The ten point four five million pounds the government gave us, we've actually given seventy-five percent out of that to the care homes directly as we're instructed by government and the twenty-five percent we're going to give, donate out, well, give to home care providers who've really done a sterling job during the pandemic, looking after people and actually also picking up the people who had to come out of hospital and went back home. NHSX gave the council thirty Facebook portals and they've been given to care homes to, so that residents can keep in touch with their families because we've known that's been a really big problem to families, that they can't see their mum or dad or family. We've also, with some of the funding, we're going to modify the contracts for home care, care zones. We've got twelve zones and to help them out and we know it's really been difficult, they're going to have to do thirty minute minimum calls to personal care and there is also going to be floating teams so that when we get new cases coming in, that floating team will go straight there. And I just want to mention our domestic abuse service, you've heard on the news how domestic abuse has really been at the front and saying it's increased. Our provider Eden Links actually quickly adapted the way that they work with victims and children and families during the pandemic and they've actually been able to see more people and speak to more people because actually it's been online or via the phone. So it has been, you know, the service has continued really well during such a difficult time. And obviously we've been, worked very closely with the police and health on these type of issues. And finally, I just want to thank all our staff in children's, adult care and public health who have adapted to ensure that all our critical services have continued during the pandemic. And obviously we've got new ways of working which we'll now be looking at to see whether, should that be the way we're working from now on? But, you know, I just think, wanted to pass our thanks on, they've done a fantastic job. Thank you mister chairman.
Thank you councillor Bradwell, thank you. Right, and move on now then to councillor Colin Davy.
Thank you chairman. As councillor Hill has already mentioned, the last few months have been incredibly difficult for our local businesses and that's going to continue for some time to come. COVID nineteen has had a significant impact on the economy and on growth locally, just as it has nationally. I'm very proud however of all that we have done to help support our businesses and all that we continue to do. Our teams have worked quickly and flexibly and have repurposed the advice that we give to businesses to reflect government guidance, updating it frequently. Since the start of the lockdown, the services that we commissioned have provided one-to-one advice to five hundred and ninety-six businesses. This has included help to diversify or to provide services differently so they can keep operating in the toughest of trading environments. The Business Lincolnshire website has been a valuable source of current support for the business community with around four and a half thousand individual users accessing information on the site. The council has also supported construction work in Lincolnshire to continue where possible. The development management team carried out remote site checking during lockdown, making sure bigger projects such as housing and other developments could move forward safely. Developers and contractors provided photos, videos, documentation and testing certificates so the teams could check whether work was up to standard and conditions were being met without having to physically attend sites. And as always, we have shown that together we are stronger in Lincolnshire and stronger for Lincolnshire. And it is not just our local communities that are valid to help each other. We have worked with district and unitary councils across the Greater Lincolnshire area who have now allocated more than two hundred million pounds in grants to businesses. We have worked with organisations like the chambers of commerce, banks and accountants. They have all run online webinars on subjects as diverse as wellbeing for employers and managing insurance claims. Our Team Lincolnshire ambassador programme has started weekly Team Lincolnshire care webinars, which are greatly appreciated by its members. The Greater Lincolnshire LECC as a thriving partnership has led the response phase. In particular, it has run a campaign to encourage students and the unemployed to help out in Lincolnshire agriculture and food sector, an area which has seen huge demand. Last month, this was strengthened further when Rutland County Council joined the Greater Lincolnshire LECC and North and North Lincolnshire councils committed to sole membership of it. They were previously also part of the Humber side LECC. To get our economy on track in Lincolnshire, it's important we continue with our key investments. Although work on the food enterprise only in Hole Beach was paused for a short amount of time, we are now back on site. I am pleased to say that the steel frame for the first building on the site, the University of Lincoln's Food Technology Centre has now been erected. We know our tourism businesses are suffering greatly and whilst the situation is outside of our control, we will continue to ensure that the right support is provided for phased recovery that gives confidence to residents and visitors. The scenes from Bournemouth yesterday are a warning to us all that this is not going to be easy, particularly if we approach July the fourth. Tourism will need to be relaunched in a considered and managed way which generates much needed revenue. So we will continue with our ambition to diversify the visitor economy through raising the quality of the tourism offer and providing jobs in other sectors. I'm also pleased to confirm that the basic construction foot off boat shed cafe is almost complete, ready for the installation phase. As a modular building has been built off site, so good progress has been made. We will also shortly be starting to build a roadway in Skegness Business Park so it can be opened up to employers in sectors which will help to diversify the coastal economy. And of course, as we've been dealing with the current emergency, many of our residents may still be feeling the effects of the last one. Work has continued over the last few months to complete the flood investigations opened across Lincolnshire from the months of heavy rainfall from June to November. Present there remain around a hundred and fifty open investigations and the council continues to work within current restrictions to conclude these and to seek solutions for those affected residents. Members will be aware that the investigation into flooding in the Wainfleet area was completed before COVID lockdown. A hundred and fifty thousand pounds has been allocated to support implementation of urgent measures accordingly. We have also completed and published a long-term action plan in partnership with this catchment to ensure we invest this money to the best possible effect. Our flood alleviation scheme did be began last month as part of the capital scheme and we'll also be trying a new scheme across Lincolnshire, giving householders access to resilient measures for their properties. This scheme will be aimed at very localised issues, often affecting only a small number of properties where a large scale scheme may be harder to put in place. The scheme we are implementing has been used successfully by Essex County Council in recent years and we are working with them to learn from that experience. And concluding, as with many other council services, we have shown our commitment to continuing to provide valued services through a time when they have been needed more than ever and to deliver priority projects even in the most challenging of circumstances. Thank you chairman.
Thank you councillor Davy, thank you for that. Right, we'll move on swiftly now then to councillor Richard Davies. Councillor Davies.
Thank you mister chairman. I'll start very briefly then, we're talking about the broader impact of COVID. Undeniably, the impact on the transport network has been huge in terms of what's happened with COVID, not only directly in terms of people's changing, working from home, different employment options, but also more largely the public sector has seen some very big changes, particularly around public transport. Bus operators I would highlight in particular have been very badly affected as bus passenger numbers collapsed and I think it's fair to say a number of operators will struggle in coming months and it's something we're working very closely with to try and support as much as we can. More specifically, I think we've tried to make sure that our response to requests around pavement usage for example, has been proportionate, efficient and practical and sensible. There has been some instances caused to do wholesale changes to the way our town centres work for example and I think in the short term, we need to avoid rushing to do anything that might actually detrimentally affect in particular the retail economy. I'm pleased to say we've been allocated nearly a million pounds worth of funding from the government's COVID fund in two tranches towards improving the way our towns and city operates and we're currently working up plans to see how that can operate. In particular, we're working closely with district council and town council colleagues to ensure that what we deliver is effective. This is a great opportunity to do things differently and I think one of the benefits of, if you can call it that, a mild silver lining, is that there is an opportunity to make Lincolnshire and the rest of the country operate and work differently, in particular around commuting and the amount of time we try to spend travelling to and from work. And I'm particularly pleased to see the uptake in cycling. And I think if we can capitalise on that, then we'll make, see significant differences to the way our transport networks operate, in particular around those shorter kind of one to three mile journeys that people very often commute into work. You know, if we can get more of those people walking and cycling, then the benefits are undeniable. However, it would be remiss of me not to suggest there haven't been any significant disbenefits to the work of the county council, in particular looking at our major schemes. I'll start with Lincoln Eastern Bypass. Members will be aware, the Eastern Bypass is a scheme to move the A fifteen out of Lincoln. Construction is a hundred million pound plus scheme involving bridges across very difficult and wet terrain. Last year was very heavily affected by flooding. Unfortunately, when COVID first broke, the site did have to stop operating while social distancing measures were introduced. However, I'm pleased to report that However, I'm pleased to report that the scheme is back up and running, and actually progress has been good. The drier weather has undeniably helped, and a change in drainage contractors has meant that a lot of the problems we were having in and around drainage are now being rectified, and progress is good. And I'm very confident the road will be open by the end of the year. Similarly, in Grantham, Grantham Southern Relief Road is a scheme to take the A52 out of Grantham. That managed to keep operating in terms of the construction phase despite Covid. The particular point in the scheme it was at was the piling to create the tunnel under the A1, and thankfully, that was a fairly machine-based operation and didn't require an awful lot of face-to-face contact, but that's going ahead. Both of those schemes will see cost increases because of Covid. Unfortunately, this time, it's not easy to quantify what those will be. Obviously, we'll be updating council in due course. Moving ahead, Spalding Western Relief Road, members will know, is a five-part road scheme to try and ease some of the congestion, predominantly caused by level crossings actually in the centre of Spalding, and also to deliver on South Holland District Council's push for growth and housing. Detailed design of the scheme is currently underway. Archaeology for the first phases of Phase Five, which is the northern section, is due to start with construction of that phase due to start autumn this year. Since our last meeting, I think we have raised the issue of the Boston Distributor Road, Mr. Chairman, no doubt very close to your heart, with Matt Warman, and with his support, we have lobbied central government. Unfortunately, their initial response is that there aren't funds enabled to support this scheme at the moment, but we are looking at other avenues. Another manifesto commitment we made going into the last election was to explore the Lincolnshire Coastal Highway, and that's very much about connecting both sides of the county closer together. Now, we have a series of schemes underway already, such as on the A46 north of Lincoln, but we are rolling out a multi-year programme that will include a variety of improvements, such as more footway and cycleways, to provide linkages to both the travelling public but also the residents along that section. I think we're going to see a number of footways in places like Ragby, as well as a wholesale resurfacing injunction improvements. And as and when schemes come forward, I look forward to sharing with council. Moving on to additional minor schemes, anybody in the north of the county can't fail to have noticed the amount of work we've got going on. In particular, Rice Home Roundabout in Lincoln, very much around increasing capacity on that A46 route. And harking back to councillor Davy's comments about the tourist economy, that A46 is a key connectivity route for people to get to the east coast, which is incredibly important for the tourist economy. And that will be starting, the work started in February and already works are going well. It did have to pause during Covid, but we're planning on making the roundabout bigger to enable traffic to flow better through it. Further along the A46, the Dunham Welton Roundabout was a notorious black spot, where unfortunately, people have lost their lives due to road accidents over recent years. And I was very pleased that we were able to secure funding from national government also locally to see this roundabout built. It's a particularly dangerous stretch of road, and I'm sure many members will know it well. And we're looking to start those works in September, that we'll see a brand-new roundabout created there, which again will support access into Welton and eliminate this dangerous hotspot. Towards the centre-south of the county, we've got a significant amount of work going on in and around Sleaford. At the moment, the Sleaford Rugby Club Junction site compound is up and running and works are underway there, very much about signalising that junction coming off of the A17 and providing some more access space in order to make that connectivity with the A17 work much better, as it's a key linkage, in particular into the employment areas of northern Sleaford. Unfortunately, parallel works we'd hoped to conduct, Holdingham Roundabout, probably the busiest roundabout in the county, where the A17, the A15 merge near Sleaford. We have had to delay that until the middle of February, so a big piece of work, unfortunately. And then moving on to another notorious accident black spot.
Hi councillor Davies, we're up to seven minutes now.
Oh, I will finish.
We're all really interested in the updates, and that's why I've let it carry on a bit.
Just to finish on Corrigan Roundabout, to say, the work starts in, sorry, Corrigan Junction, the work starts in September, it'll take approximately 10 weeks. Thank you very much, and apologies for overrunning.
Thanks, Richard, thank you very much. Right, we'll move on then to councillor Eddie Poll.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. I'll try not to be as verbose as my predecessor. Not an easy task. Well, I'd just like to say that, you know, the Lincolnshire coast, unfortunately, for us and fortunately for others, is now open again to visitors, as is the country park. And we would like very much to welcome responsible visitors to the coast, because some of the scenes we've seen on national TV are just too bad for words, really, aren't they? So if you're going to come to Lincolnshire, please behave responsibly, abide by the social distancing regulations, and remember that we're here when you've gone back home. We've made a great deal of progress on the Green Master Plan and our efforts to get towards carbon neutrality. Unfortunately, due to the slowdown in working processes across the county, and not just within LCC but within the district councils as well, the master plan won't hit the full council agenda this year, it'll be early next year, probably February. So apologies for the delay on that, but couldn't really be helped. Other than that, another part of my portfolio, really, I suppose, and perhaps people are most interested in at the moment, is the waste programme. Well, the Lincolnshire Waste Partnership, I'm pleased to say, has gone from strength to strength, and particularly came to the fore during this Covid nineteen outbreak, when there was a massive amount of partnership work and sharing of resource across all the districts and the county, and we've just brought it so well together to maintain services as far as was possible. We were losing people due to self-isolation and all that sort of stuff, but really, all the household waste collection services went ahead, with the exceptions of the green waste and the stuff that wasn't considered essential. Unfortunately, we did have to close the household waste recycling centres, otherwise known as TIPS, for those very reasons, and there was an awful lot of traffic buildup at lots of sites, as people rushing to get rid of their rubbish before lockdown came in. That caused an issue or two, but we dealt with all that. We've now got our paper and card, separate collections, ready for rollout, and I think it'll be your authority, councillor Brooks, that will probably see this coming to the fore first, because you are quite well advanced and you need all the help you can get. So we'll look forward to that come along fairly soon. We're also maintaining the anti-fly tipping campaign, which I have to say, there's been increased incidences of fly tipping, and not to the extent that has been reported in the national press, but certainly an increase. And I just have to say to those appalling people out there, you know, you really need to think of other people, particularly during this health crisis, dumping rubbish at the roadside for other people, risking their lives to go and clear up your mess is just unforgivable. It's bad at any time, but it's absolutely appalling, the current conditions. The energy from waste plant works as normal, and as did the recycling centre, so thanks to all the staff and the management involved there who maintained those services so that we didn't, that was too much of a problem. Did a grand job there. Household waste recycling centres have reopened, and since reopening, we've had over 50,000 visits, so it's gone really well. We haven't had the massive traffic queues and long waits that other people have had, and thanks to all the staff, contractors and LCC, who've made that possible. Went over, as from July the sixth, we're back to pre-Covid waste streams being accepted, so more or less business as normal from that point of view. But we have had to split their acceptance over the week, so Mondays and Tuesdays will be black bag waste plus a host of ancillaries, and Fridays, Saturday and Sunday will be green waste plus a host of ancillaries. Don't bring the two on wrong days, because you won't be able to get in. We have to do that to maintain the compactors in use, and of course, it's not just as easy as you bring it to us and tip it in a bin, we then have to move on, and everything's not switched back on properly yet, so please bear with us, we'll do our best. The most important message, if you're going to use the tipper, is do not forget to make an appointment. We've had lots of people, despite all the publicity that we've done, we've still had lots of people turning up without appointments, and if you haven't got an appointment, you won't get in. We need to maintain the number of vehicles on site, we need to maintain the social distancing, we need to maintain safe operations for the staff and the public on the tips. The advantage of the booking system has been that people are turning up, it's a much less stressed atmosphere, people are enjoying a trip to the tip, and the atmosphere on site now, if you go, it's just so much better than it was before. People relax, thankful, and the system's working really well, so let's hope it maintains that way. Other than that, Jim, I haven't really got much to say. Don't forget to make an appointment to get to the tip. And in case I forgot to say, don't forget to make an appointment to get to the tip.
And you're not going to tell us what the greedy board is then?
Greedy boards? They're extensions to the size of your trailer so that you can get more in it.
Yeah, I know. A lot of members didn't know, though. Anyway, move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Eddie. On to councillor Mrs. Woolley, over to you, sir.
Thanks very much indeed, Mike. Last week, I was driving in Bourne, and I saw two little girls in their uniform excitedly running towards their primary school together. Ordinarily, I wouldn't have thought twice about it, but it was a really welcome reminder of what normal should look like, and perhaps, you know, we have been taking things for granted before the coronavirus outbreak. I've been amazed and inspired by how our residents have supported each other, often going beyond and above the neighbours and indeed their communities. I join councillor Hill in recognising the excellent work that our staff have carried out in helping to coordinate these efforts, which have seen redeployed staff from across the council come together to support our most vulnerable residents. They've worked with over 400 local voluntary organisations and 600 volunteers, and together they've gone out and carried out welfare visits, delivered food parcels and prescriptions. On a more concerning note, though, is that over the last couple of months, we've seen twice as many visits as usual by the not-for-profit organisations to the county council's funding portal, and this appears to be as a direct result of the pandemic. During this time, we've also carried out our first county view survey, and this is a piece of work that will be taking place three times a year on behalf of all of the councils in Greater Lincolnshire. Perhaps surprisingly, or sorry, I should say unsurprisingly, the issue that's coming out that is bugging most people is that they would like to see an improvement in road networks and highway maintenance, and you can see further results on the county council's website. I'm sure you'll also be aware now of the monthly town and parish council newsletter which we're sending out. We're up to 366 town and parish councils across Lincolnshire. Engagement with this newsletter is increasing every single month, and it's developing into a really useful tool that we can use to both gather information and indeed put out the county council's news and activity. I'm pleased to say that our engagement teams have also built 309 individual websites for the town and parish councils over the last couple of months. Moving on to Health Matters, Health Watch Lincolnshire have been inviting people to share their views on how Covid nineteen has impacted on their health and wellbeing, and the findings are going to be used by the LRS intelligence gathering from the pandemic, as well as helping to inform our health and wellbeing board on our future focus. I recently contributed to a report for the LGA on our health and wellbeing reset in the light of Covid nineteen. This will ensure progress is made towards reducing health inequalities whilst reassessing local need. On Tuesday, I chaired a virtual LGA conference on the topic of health inequalities. Professor Sir Michael Marmot delivered the keynote speech, and we heard how health and wellbeing boards are leading on the wider determinants of health and tackling health inequalities. Just with me a moment, chairman. I think the more concerning thing for me is around our local NHS. Clearly, they have been incredibly busy, and like most of us, I'm sure you've been out either banging on saucepans and making your voice heard on a Thursday evening. And United Lincolnshire Hospitals Trusts have also been working behind the scenes to keep their work going. They've recently approved a plan to help those patients who've had surgery and appointments postponed due to Covid nineteen to get the treatment they need. The trust will temporarily create a largely Covid site at Grantham on the hospital site for the next phase of the pandemic, and they will be carrying out more chemotherapy sessions, cancer surgeries and other elective surgeries for patients from across Lincolnshire. And whilst I completely appreciate and welcome the restart of these procedures and understand the rationale behind them, there are clearly local concerns. We will be monitoring any impacts closely and ensuring that this is only a temporary measure, as they have promised. Lincolnshire's GPs and primary care services are now arranged into 14 areas called primary care networks, and this is another positive step in coordinating health and social care, making services more integrated for residents. They'll build on the existing services and will form part of the county's aspirations that people will live in good health for longer. Finally, further to my updates at the last full council meeting, I'm pleased to confirm that at long last, the four CCGs in Lincolnshire have turned into one. John Turner is the CEO, and I can now tell you that Sean Lyons is the new chairman. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you councillor Woolley, thank you for that. And now move on to councillor Worth. Councillor Nick Worth, over to you, Nick.
Thank you, chairman. Apologies, you can't see me, but there's a bonus to all things and fragment videos. Pushes its limits in rural Holbeach and Marks a bit sometimes. Firstly, I'd like to thank the staff for being so creative in the way we do business. I'm really impressed with their attitudes and positivity during this crisis, it has been quite outstanding. Culture and heritage, services have adapted amazingly well. Many of our heritage and culture services were offered virtually, including storytimes, online Q and A sessions, and the virtual hosting of the VE Day celebrations. Libraries, although physically closed, did a roaring trade. Compared to last year, the number of new members joining the library service increased by 712% in April and 225% in May. E-book issues were up 223% and 345% across the two months, and there were large increases in the number of e-magazines and e-n newspapers, as well as the amount of music streamed through the portal. I'm pleased to announce that we'll be able to reopen core libraries on the 13th of July with 60% current opening hours. There'll be a takeaway service for books, I'm afraid there'll be no browsing initially, and you'll have to phone and reserve your book and then collect it, or you can do click and collect. There will be limited PC use by the public as well. The access service should be ready to roll within about two weeks' notice, full mobile service about four weeks after that. Review, there will be a review at the beginning of August with a view to supporting community hubs opening, and the next phase of core library opening will create areas for limited browsing. In the heritage area, building on the success of the reopening of the grounds and the wall walks at Lincoln Castle, where over a thousand people a day attend, we will be ready to open some of the other sites on the 13th of July. We open the rest of Lincoln Castle's offer, the collection, although not necessarily seven days a week, archives three or four days a week, and the Butler Britain Memorial Fund three or four days a week. Staff from the Museum of Lincolnshire Life, the Usher Gallery and the learning team will be temporarily reallocated to ensure some additional staff at those sites during the opening on the 13th of July, to ensure public confidence in adhering to social distancing and one-way systems. Subject to how opening goes and any changes of governance advice, we'll review every four weeks with anticipating opening of other sites for the October half term. The consultation on the Usher Gallery is ongoing as we speak, and we expect to hear that report at the end of the month. Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue has continued to strengthen our relationships with emergency services. The Fire Control Room is now successfully relocated to Police and Fire Headquarters at Netherlam, supporting our drive for even closer collaboration between emergency services in the county. The mobilising system in the control room, the control room use has also been upgraded to provide increased resilience for the future. We've had 11 new on-call firefighters join us in January, having successfully completed their initial recruit course. Nine of the further 11 new recruits were able to start with us in March, and the two brand-new entrants are now returning to brand-new entrants are now returning to training along with six new on-call recruits. We have completed the consultation with the public and stakeholders, our integrated risk management plan, also known as our community plan, which outlines our key risks to the communities and the organisation itself. This will be used as a basis for how we mitigate these risks, how we use our resources to give the best results and make Lincolnshire safer, stronger and more resilient. I'm pleased to be able to report that during the exceptional challenges of the last few months, our fire coverers remain strong, and many fire crews have gone above and beyond in supporting their local communities. Twelve firefighters have trained with East Midlands Ambulance Service to be able to support their response to COVID-19 if necessary, such as driving urgent care vehicles and safely moving patients. The fire prevention team have continued to support vulnerable people across the county with advocates giving telephone advice and providing safe and well visits to the most vulnerable. Registration and Coroner's Service, birth registrations are being introduced as we speak. Death registrations are being completed by telephone. Notices of marriages are being reintroduced. They are currently being completed at Lincoln only, with the other offices being able to take notices of marriages as soon as possible. Wedding ceremonies in July are being checked and staffing is being arranged. Ceremonies in August are being contacted to confirm attendance and arrange necessary legal preliminaries. All ceremonies will be subject to two-metre social distancing, and those in the registration offices will also be converted into standard ceremonies to ensure they're completed in the given timescale. All licensed venues are being contacted to ensure their registration staff remain a two-metre distance from couples and guests. Thank you, chairman.
Chairman, I think you're muted. I do apologise, I muted myself, so we're on. Thank you councillor Worth for that. Thank you, Nick. We'll move on now to councillor Young. Over to you, Barry.
Thank you, chairman. Start off by talking about safer communities and safety in general. The SLP, the Safe and Dangerous Partnership, has very, really very good use of teams in keeping meetings of its various priority groups going during COVID. Safety Together, the partnership between the police and the county council, has also very good use of teams. Unfortunately, have been a big calls to the normal day job, made essential by what's been going on this quarter. You should remember, the thinking of the partnership, very much co-locating the police and our people, as they work together, they had no problems, definitely. For all that said, there is no doubt whatsoever that the government is there to pick up the brief fully as COVID sees. Trading Standards, in January, we welcomed four new Trading Standards officers. All four are working towards the Level Four, Level Five class officer partnerships. This partnership is recognised by the TOT Trading Standards Institute and will help support the future struggles for legal officers when going out.
Councillor Young, do you think you could get a little bit nearer to the mic? I've got some people indicating on the chat that they can't hear you very well. If you could drive, please. Thank you.
In March, is this better?
Yes, that's a lot better. Thank you.
I think I have some paper covering up the mic. In March, Trading Standards carried out one of the largest ever animal seizures, taking to their care 48 cattle that were deemed to be suffering or at risk. Action like this is always taken as a last resort, and in this case, it followed a number of visits by Trading Standards where improvement notices were issued, but unfortunately not applied. The court hearing following the seizure should have taken place in April, as you may have read in the newspapers, national newspapers, that the courts have almost branched or so. So particularly, hearing was delayed till later this month. And meanwhile, LCC have taken on the role of custodians to 48 cattle. It doesn't occur to me that councillor Bradwell, with her experience of looking after children and indeed adults, that she might be very qualified also to take on some cattle now. We've also continued to fight the, continued on the fight against scams. As fraudsters attempted to cash in on the coronavirus outbreak, our Trading Standards Services continue to issue warnings and advice about the latest scams to residents and businesses. The service is currently testing PPE and hand sanitisers that are being offered to residents and businesses to ensure that they're legally acquired and that any safety claims are verified. In the Community Safety Team, we welcomed a new coordinator in January who assumed the responsibility for reducing offending and of slavery. He began work in the Safe Public Adults Board to progress the recommendations in the Serious Adult Review, learning from the experience of large-scale model slavery in Lincolnshire. Our Domestic Abuse Lead supported commercial colleagues in the re-refundment of Refuge Support Service contracts earlier this year to ensure that we can continue to provide a safe space for those escaping domestic abuse. We were also successful in securing additional government funding, £187,000, to develop the county's accommodation options for victims of domestic abuse even further. As lockdown restrictions were introduced, it was vital that we continued to provide our services to help victims. We really did fear that there would be a huge increase. There have been increases virtually all over the country. But I'm delighted to say that Lincolnshire has not seen a significant rise in reports of abuse or affluence, or falls to our support services, jobs like that. Since being set up in 2015, the Stay Safe partnership now engaged with over 160,000 people across Lincolnshire on anti-suspension behaviour, alcohol awareness, drug awareness, healthy relationships, internet safety, fire safety and road safety. The team has also prepared sources for parents, parents, families, home students, the children when schools close, when the tier. Moving on to HR and what they've been up to. Obviously, COVID is a big issue, and there's lots of work going on. For example, revision of revision of employee health and wellbeing delivery plans. HR are developing interventions in response to COVID-19 and, like you mentioned, quick wins. The plan will also include development of culturally competent risk assessments to account for risks to B A groups, and will also look into incorporating employee recognition recommendations. Performance Management Framework, with a review of performance management frameworks for agile working. Performance Management, we're developing additional managers' guidance on handling disciplinary agreements on sickness, absences, virtually, where both HR devices change or manage a lead.
Councillor Young, we're up at six and a half minutes now, just.
I do not want the title that Mr Davis took earlier on, so I'll move on very quickly. Legal services. As everybody will be aware, it would bring a lot of work into legislation covering statutes and advising whether this is legal or that is legal. There has been a bit of a drop in projected income, but the hope is that things settle down a bit more, or this will flatten out a year.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you councillor Young. Yep. And that concludes that item on the agenda. Now, moving on to item 10, which is questions to the chairman, the leader, executive councillors, chairman of committees and subcommittees. I'm anxious to our good spread of questions across the virtual chamber within the time allocated, and I intend to allow 45 minutes of questions. I'm expecting councillors to be disciplined because of the time available. When invited to ask a question, councillors should switch on their video microphone and switch them off again when they have finished speaking. Now, the 45 minutes is going to take us to between quarter past and 20 past one, but I intend to take this item and then break for half an hour for lunch, because we've still got quite a bit to get through. So we'll move on with the questions, please. And the first one I've got is councillor Rob Kendrick to councillor Patricia Bradwell. Over to councillor Kendrick.
Thank you, chairman. It would be a brief question. In view of the £1 billion that the government's allocated to help with the COVID-19 crisis in schools, I appreciate we'll get a share of that, and I was just wondering if any work's being done as regards use of venues other than schools, bearing in mind the need for social distancing. I know there's been an issue of people saying, obviously, you can't have that many number of pupils in a classroom because of the social distancing. So I was just wondering whether any work's being done on exploring alternative venues so that more children can be taught, bearing in mind the regulations on social distancing. Thank you, chairman.
Over to you.
Yeah, thank you councillor Kendrick. I think the government has been clear that schools cannot use community rooms. What schools are doing, and they're doing it now, sometimes if it's a nice day, you know, children go outside and have their lessons. But I know what you're saying, that obviously with the social distance, and it is coming down to a metre, but actually, you know, perhaps some schools would need it to come down some more. I think the government are, have been quite clear that we, they want all children back to school in September, so therefore, you know, we are working with the DFE on all these difficult scenarios that schools have, because actually, when you've got a really big school, you know, you have more opportunities to break up groups, don't you? The government have talked about a bubble being a class. So, you know, at the moment, a bubble is 15 probably, but they have talked about bubbles being the year group, you know, the class, class. So, you know, again, that will alter, that will alter how schools can actually get more of their children into school. And I think the government agree, and what I've said today, is important we get these young people back into school, back into learning, because actually, you know as well as I do, you've had a daughter, you know those early years are the most important when you start to learn. So we are working with schools, you know, our education team's working with schools, advising them, but also Heather is speaking regularly with DFE and planning. They've been quite interested about our problems with school transport. So I think over the next few weeks, we will learn more. But, you know, school leaders are committed to wanting children back in school, but I think the real problem was the two metres. We're down to a metre. It'll be interesting to see, have we got a metre social distancing by the time we get to September?
Thank you. Thank you for that, councillor Bradwell. Right, the next one I've got is councillor Robin Renshaw to councillor Richard Davies. Over to you councillor Renshaw.
Thank you, chairman. The government announcement, a £55 million being allocated to Lincolnshire County Council for highways-related expenditure is to be welcomed across the chamber. The Labour Group believes that this is, this is an opportunity to revitalise environmental issues in Lincolnshire, similar to innovative practices in other councils. One such measure that has been well received is the widening of pedestrian thoroughfares by utilising the vehicle highway. Stay in UK holidays is another initiative which could benefit our local economy. Evidence has shown that during the CV lockdown, our carbon footprint has been reduced dramatically because of less fossil fuel vehicle use. The air is currently much fresher and exercising more as followed, which will improve the county's health and wellbeing. Will you, Richard, as the relevant portfire holder, bring forward a matter, as a matter of priority, a plan of action, including recovery for all master plan, so that the bonus funding from government is not fitted on encouraging even more unsustainable use in Lincolnshire? Thank you.
Over to you, Richard, councillor Davies.
Thank you for the question, Robin. I mean, the only slight problem with your question is the numbers actually aren't correct. I will admit that the government has announced £54 million worth of highways funding for Lincolnshire County Council, but unfortunately, the vast majority of it is money they'd already told us we were getting. So the ability for it to impact hugely on how we operate the transport network is relatively limited. However, I will agree with the ethos of what you're saying, and in fact, we preempted this. You will be, I'm sure, as a Lincoln member, extremely aware of the Lincoln Transport Strategy, which is an action plan for all of the things you have mentioned in your question, and that is mirrored around the major and smaller market towns of Boston, of Spalding, of Grantham, of Skegness and Gainsborough, where we're doing exactly what you're already talking about. The question will be how we fund it, but it's, I couldn't agree more that in a lot of cases, we need to get people out of their cars, because it makes no sense for people to be travelling, you know, one or two miles, three miles to work, for example, if we can put in more sustainable and better measures. But we're already well down the route of doing this and have some exciting plans in place.
Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Right, the next question I've got is councillor Kate Cook to councillor Richard Davies.
Okay, thank you, chairman. First of all, congratulations on becoming chairman. I hope you have a great year ahead. So a question for Richard. It's regarding the delay on work for Holdingham Roundabout to February 2021 instead of this autumn as originally planned to get started. I know work started on the A17, A153, Sleaford Rugby Club junction in May instead of April as planned due to COVID, and that junction's due to be completed in the autumn this year. And obviously, myself and other Sleafordians are so welcome the improvements to this junction, and thank you and the team for getting that going, you know, quicker than you would have thought in the circumstances. But there is a lot of disappointment that the work on Holdingham Roundabout has been delayed to February 2021 instead of the autumn straight after the completion of the work to the Rugby Club junction as was planned. I'm just wondering if you could explain the reasons for the delay when it was not considered to be a problem to start works on Holdingham in the autumn originally. People have been saying there's sort of fewer cars on the road, especially with people working from home and likely to do so for a few months. Traffic over Christmas being less, hard ground apparently isn't an issue. Well, I'm consulting with a civil engineering company here, and we have mild winters. But also, just following on from that, I've been asked by town councillors about how this affects the provision of a new traffic model for Sleaford, because I was told that it would be revised after the completion of Holdingham Roundabout. Apparently, the Sleaford Transport Strategy will follow on from a new traffic model for Sleaford, but I was told that it could take a year for the traffic model to be completed. So we're looking realistically, realistically, at the end of 2022 for the Sleaford Transport Strategy to be completed. And the strategy is really needed, because I was told it would inform why we deserve funding opportunities should they arise. And so just in summary, my question is, why the delay to Holdingham? And also to have your assurance that the Sleaford Transport Strategy will be a priority after Holdingham's completion. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you for the question. In real terms, it's around capacity and access to site in terms of manpower availability to do the works. It's also not true that you can do highways works in the winter as effectively as you can in the slightly drier weather. It just as we've seen, I think the phrase winters are milder, in some regard, they may not be as cold, but they're certainly wetter than they were, and that can be a problem. But it's very much about getting on when there's resource availability to be able to do that piece of work. The Holdingham Roundabout will be probably one of the most disruptive pieces of work we'll have done in recent times, because it impacts on one of the busiest junctions. And so in simple terms, it's access to, to, to people and equipment, et cetera. I think the other thing is there are some issues around quite how far we go with the improvements. Is there an opportunity to do more to make the junction function even better? And I think that's something that we're going to use this time to consider. Because obviously, as you rightly point out, it fits into schemes around that area of Sleaford, not only the Rugby Club Junction. And I certainly want to use that time just to review it and see if there's potentially more that can be done. My ambition was always to do, you know, considerably more there really in terms of slip lanes and landtake. In terms of the Sleaford model, yeah, it always takes about a year to do a model. And for the benefit of members, that, that isn't kind of me sat with my sticky back plastic doing a diorama and then painting it. It's a computer-based evidence model. It involves data collection. It involves talking to people about where they're going from. It involves analysis of what transport movements are. And we use bits of information from anonymously collected by mobile phones. We'll talk to local businesses. It's a, it's a huge process. And that, that combined with the strategy gives us that bible that we refer to. And I think one of the, the changes we're now making is, is rolling that approach out to all of the towns, so they have a much more informed model. It can be controversial. I'm looking to the top left in my screen and seeing the chairman looking at me quite discerningly. I, I'm reminded that one of the things that came out of the model for Boston is the, the stark reality that the vast majority of travel, of vehicle movements in Boston are local, they're not through. I think it'll be interesting to see what comes out of Sleaford, because you've got that real juxtaposition of the A17, the A15, and, and internal traffic. And I know local members in Sleaford, including yourself, have been advocating for quite a fundamental change in and around particularly the level crossing. And it's this kind of thing will feed into that. But I'm, I'm sorry it has to be delayed. I think by and large, we've done well, but we must do better.
Thank you, Richard. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Right, I'll move on then to the next question, which is councillor Graham Cullen to councillor Colin Davie.
Afternoon, chairman, and congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Right, Colin Davie, give the measures put in place to support businesses in general. What extra support a portfolio holder gain from the national government to counter the extra difficulties facing seasonal businesses, especially along our side coast, to the visitor economy of Lincolnshire? Thank you.
Thanks councillor Cullen for the question. As I said in my statement, working alongside all the districts and unitaries, we have managed to successfully get out over £200 million in support to businesses through the grant process. Obviously, the coastal economy is a different kind of economy to other sectors. There's a lot more part-time workers, a lot more self-employed workers. And we're very clear that the tourism and retail and hospitality sector is going to be one of the hardest ones to recover in the future. It is now about making sure the reopening of that economy is done so carefully and in a considered way. Worst thing that can happen for this sector is a second lockdown, because I, I fear that many businesses will not recover from that. So we are obviously working through the let, through the business growth comes to advise businesses, making sure they're getting the right support in terms of the reopening process. A lot of this work is being done, obviously, with our district colleagues. East Lindsay has a very significant role to play in the area you're in, councillor Cullen, and we'll continue to work and support them in any way possible. The critical, the critical date is obviously the 4th of July. The scenes in Bournemouth, as I said yesterday, were not helpful. And the Secretary of State for Health is this morning threatening to close beaches, which will certainly not help our tourism economy if that is to be the case. We need to urge people to come to our coast, be safe here, take the precautions necessary to avoid that second lockdown. And if we do that, and we support our businesses with the right advice, I'm sure we'll come out of that. So if you have any specific issues locally you want me to deal with, please drop me a mail.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Could I just ask members who are not involved in the question, speaking or asking the question, if they could switch their video and mic off? Because apparently it makes it difficult for people who are hard of hearing, who do do some lip reading, to be able to, with so many screens up on the, in view, it makes it difficult for them. So if you could please bear that in mind. I've now got councillor Matt Bowles to councillor Eddie Paul. Over to you, councillor Bowles.
Thank you, chairman. Afternoon, Eddie. Please could clarify to many of my residents who have recently contacted me, who have to work Monday to Friday, how would they get rid of household waste, mattresses, et cetera? Because under the current regulations, these items would only be accepted on a Monday and a Tuesday, and no opportunity is available at weekends. Do you accept that restrictions like this and others imposed over the last three months have led to the huge spike in fly tipping we are suffering in and around Gainsborough at present? And could you please outline what work the council is doing with partners to tackle this scourge on our environment? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the question, Matt. Yeah, I'm sorry, but I can't do the video link at the moment. It cuts everything off. They're changing my broadband from twisted copper wire to fibre, so things may be better in the future. But please accept my apologies if this call was out today. Yeah, well, I know there's been a bit of an issue with bulky items particularly. Mattresses, you mentioned, and all that sort of stuff. You have to remember that household waste recycling centres are there to take those items that can't be dealt with by any other manner. Black bag refuse should go in the black bags or black bins for collection from the curbside. Mattresses could be disposed of via the bulky waste collection service that the district councils run. And I appreciate that people don't necessarily want to pay for those, but those services are there for that, for that use. However, we do provide that service at the household waste recycling centre. And currently, because we have the problems moving things onwards, and we have to use the compactors for the main waste stream, we can't take everything at the same time. We don't have sufficient space or sufficient movement capacity to enable it to happen. We have, as you said, currently introduced Monday and Tuesday, when you can bring the bulky items in on Tuesday. We are looking at changing one of the days to make that a weekend. But at the moment, we can only deal with the, the changeovers on midweek, not at the weekend. I would hope that in the not too distant future, we're enabled, we are able to use perhaps a Friday, Saturday or Sunday, probably a Sunday, for one of those black bag and bulky waste days, and change it from the green waste. Problem we have, of course, is during the summer, most of our waste is green waste, carbon waste, which again, there is a green waste collection service available to residents across the county. So I hope that helps. We'll do our best to make sure that the services are as good as we can get them, and give maximum availability to, to our customers to use the sites. But you should use it your first protocol, you should use your curbside collection, most environmentally and most economical method of waste disposal. Please make sure you put only the proper items in the bins, and yes, use this opportunity to try and get the recycling rates up by doing your recycling properly. If you're at home, there's, there's no excuse for not making sure you recycle properly. You've got a bit more time on your hands, do the job right, and it makes everybody's life easier, saves a planet. That's good job. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Paul. Right, I'll move on to the next question then. It's councillor Jackie Brockway to councillor Martin Powell.
Thank you, chairman. The current pandemic has highlighted unexpected benefits in areas such as health and environment and cost savings. When the time is right, will the leader be willing to work with the chief executive to investigate this more fully, so that as many of these benefits as possible can be embedded in this council's future working practices? Thank you, chairman.
Yeah, thank you for the question, councillor Brockway. Yes, I think there are, obviously, there, there is lots of negatives about the coronavirus outbreak, but there are positives as well. And I think organisations, indeed people, we can all learn lessons on how things can be done differently. So as well as the extra costs, of course, there will be extras, there will be savings in terms of the way we're doing things differently in travel and all the rest of it. So clearly, we have commissioned, the executive have commissioned James to, to actually look at all the executive, all the CLT, to look at the lessons learned and how we can do business in a different way in the future and drive out those savings. But I think more importantly, become more efficient and more react, and better to react to the amount as they come forward. So I think it's a valid point, and we, CLT are looking at that. Thank you. Thank you for that. Right, the next question is councillor Marianne Overton to councillor Richard Davies. Over to you, Marianne.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you. I appreciate that the mailbox for many of us is full on highways, and this is certainly the thing that I get more than anything else. Potholes and poor quality road surfaces and repairs that are not up to the job. So I wanted to just ask a few questions, if I might. We've got a system which is expected to be really good about choosing priorities, about which bit of road needs doing next. But it doesn't seem to be well reflected on the ground when we're talking about particularly unclassified roads. How do we choose which unclassified roads over another? The point that I find is that if it's a very well-used unclassified road, it has a low priority, and it's really hard to get A repaired and B repaired over any length of it. Even when they're extremely well-used link roads. Same with potholes, up to 90 days to repair on a, on a unclassified road. It's too long. So thinking as we move forward for the safety and the connectivity of our, of our county, our communities, and also for the economic recovery in a clean and safe environment, can we ask, I'd like to ask, what percentage of the unclassified roads are up to standard? What's the target? And have we got a realistic plan to achieve it? By when? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Davies.
Thank you. I mean, I must say, I find the question disappointing, councillor Overton, not least with which the, the amount of time and effort officers have been spent discussing this matter with you. And in particular, the substantial meeting that was put together several months ago for you to attend, where this was all going to be gone through with you face to face, and you neglected to neither send your apologies or turn up. That said, your specific questions, currently, less than 50% of our U's and C's are really in poor condition. Our target is to have as much of the road network in a perfect condition as possible. But we do prioritise the higher classification and busier roads. As the highways asset management plan has been through the council, and has been discussed in scrutiny several times, makes clear, we prioritise roads in, I think, one to seven gradients based on number of vehicles, location and access criteria. That does mean that, you know, U's and C's that I live in around, and I know you do, don't see the level of input that other roads do. But the reality is, we have to prioritise the limited amount of funding we get, and that involves spending your money in the way the council feels appropriate. And that does tend to prioritise bigger roads that has seen more uses. But doesn't mean we're prioritising urban roads. In fact, more money is spent on roads outside the town and city than is within the city. But the reality is, it doesn't make sense to spend millions of pounds repairing roads that only go to a half a dozen houses, when we have major thoroughfares like the A15, the A72, sorry, the A17, the A52, that are in places in need of substantial repairs. In terms of how, do we have a plan to repair all of the roads to the national standard? No, we don't. To do so would cost in excess of £400 million. And you can appreciate with the budgets of the authorities it is, it would be impractical, inadvisable, and impossible to do that with the current level of budget requirements we get from the government. That is said, we are continuing to lobby for more money. This is a national problem. The RSC Foundation estimates it would cost nearly £15 billion to repair all of Britain's roads up to the national standard, which, I'll be candid, isn't in key places, the best standard that you would seek to drive a car across, as you might say. The reality is, without shifting infrastructure spending in the UK, that isn't going to happen. A question I would put back, put back to our national leaders is, is our projects such as HS2 the way to be spending £120, £130, God knows what it'll finish up with, when we could reality be spending that much, that money much better locally. But however, we continue to spend money most efficiently. I am very surprised to hear your mailbox is, is full of people complaining about the quality and condition of roads, because certainly mine isn't. And nobody ever seems to get, have a problem getting hold of me. And the reality is, we tend to be criticised more for what we don't do than what we do do. So on that, I will leave it there. Thank you.
Chairman, I just need to pick up the personal point that was made, just to say that it's perfectly, I appreciate the answer. Thank you very much. Some good points there, just to raise the importance of the area. But I have put forward a meeting, we have got one coming. And as you know, I've done a great deal of work on it. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kev Clark now to councillor Richard Davies. Over to you, Kev.
All right, thank you, chairman, and congratulations to both you and your vice chair. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to deprive you of the vision of me, but every time I touch the camera symbol, the whole thing freezes.
Kev, we're fine, councillor Clark, we're finding it very difficult to hear you. Don't know, are you, are you away from the mic or?
Oh, no, how's that?
Yeah, that's a lot better.
Yeah, I said, I'm sorry to deprive you of my vision, but every time I touch the camera symbol, the whole thing freezes.
Oh, dear.
Anyway, councillor Davies, I'm glad to hear that cycling was part of your report. If applied, the issue will ease the never-ending traffic issue within Lincoln. However, this is a little like putting, you know, what came first, the chicken or the egg? Cycles or cycle paths? Therefore, what are the intentions of the authority to encourage people on cycles? And also, does the authority intend to increase cycle paths within the city and maintain the ones we have? And under what time span? Thank you.
Thank you. Over to you, Richard.
Well, good morning, councillor Clark. And what a disappointment it is not to be able to see your smiling face, smiley face. Always enjoy your questions. Yeah, absolutely. We are committed to increasing the number of people who cycle and number of cyclists. The work that's been done in and around connecting your own ward in the, towards the south of the city into the centre of the city, has already seen a massive uptake in the number of people using not only broader public transport, but cycling in particular. One of the things we're looking at in terms of the North Highcome Relief Road, for example, is how do we start to create green corridors that go into the city, along the river, along other kind of sustainable links that can provide both cycling but also walking facilities? And you're absolutely right. I mean, it's, it's a no-brainer. To answer your question, which came first, the chicken or the egg? We all know it was the egg. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor Davies. Right, moving on, I've got the next question. Councillor Matthew Fido for councillor Richard Davies.
Good morning. And first of all, congratulations, Mr. Chairman and your, your vice chairman as well, going forward. So councillor Davies, obviously, I wanted to, like I say, build upon what a number of my Lincoln colleagues have said, obviously, you know, fantastic news on the extra funding that is going on top of the funding that I acknowledge was already there. And I wanted to pay tribute to a lot of the highways teams, first of all, who I know have been, you know, doing their best to take advantage of the quiet spells on the roads, to get a lot of work, especially around Lincoln Dunn, including some of our residential patches in my division. I know residents are very grateful. I wanted to ask a specific question relating to an issue that a number of residents have written to me about along the closes off of Dodington Road, specifically relating to people trying to turn off of the Dodington Road into the industrial estates down there and offer some of the residential closes, including there's been a number of near misses that residents have had, including one chap who unfortunately ended up one chap who unfortunately ended up in the trees down there. I wanted to know whether some of that budget will be able to be looked at in increasing sort of their safety down there for for residents, whether you and highways colleagues would be interested in coming down for for a site visit as well to, again, show you the problem in person to see what we're able to do as a highways authority to help, like I say, protect, protect our residents down there.
Thank you. Over to councillor Davies.
Thank you for the question, mate. Absolutely. I mean, I think it's been interesting during lockdown that while we've seen at times kind of traffic levels drop by about 60%, the reality has speeding has increased and that's something we need to do. I'd also thank you for taking the time to pay tribute to the team. I mean, I didn't get round to that section in my speech until I was cruelly cut off. But since the 1st of April, we've actually had a new operator in place, taking over from KIA in the form of Baltho Beatty. And I think so far, they've done, for example, you referred to surface dressing, I think, and some recycling works, nearly 2 million square metres of works. You know, we are doing tens of thousands of potholes. And that's come about through closer working together with the contractor, the deployment of tablets to highway staff. So there's, there's less coming and going in terms of site visits and that's seeing big improvements. But the reality is, there's a lot more to do. I must confess, I'm not familiar, I always know Dodington Road, but I'm not familiar with the problem there. So I think in terms of that, it's probably best to hold judgement until I get out there and visit with you. We could maybe do a socially distanced visit in the next couple of weeks, have a look at the problems on the ground and see what can be done.
Thank you for that. I'm pleased to see councillor Davies that you managed to work in a little bit from the end of your portfolio holder's speech. Over to councillor Alison Austin now, the next question to councillor Richard Davies again.
Is councillor Davies visible?
He's be listening, he'll come on in a minute, I'm sure.
Right. Good afternoon councillor Davis, Richard. My question concerns the promotion of cycling, which I know is something you have touched on, but perhaps a slightly different slant. Thank you. Although my observations are based around Boston, this question clearly applies to anywhere in the county. I live on a rural road on the outskirts of Boston, which forms part of National Cycle Route Number One, which runs from the north of Scotland to Dover and happens to pass our house. However, during lockdown, there's been a very interesting new development. Family groups have been commonly out cycling for exercise on local rural roads. This has been a whole family activity, sometimes with quite young children, maybe two parents and two or three children, but taken very responsibly by the parents. Can, sorry, I'm not quite as fluent as I might be. Time's been a long morning. Can LCC find some way to promote and build on this as a means of encouraging parents to take their children to school on bikes from an early age instead of by car, rather than nothing happening until the final year at primary school when the Road Safety Partnership offer training? Moreover, Richard, do you agree that encouraging cycle in this way with families could lead eventually to greater use of cycling as an accepted means of transport for getting to work? Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Alison. I completely agree. I mean, the work's done around the National Cycle Network and we've seen some good investment actually from in partnership with people like Sus Trans about finding those missing links and we've got more to do. In terms of the broader point you're making, the reality is it can be done and very locally in Holland, we have a very good example. You know, in, I think it was 19, the early 1970s during the OPEC oil crisis, there was a series of very nasty accidents in Holland in terms of schoolchildren to and from school. And they positively, as a society, said, look, we need to get more people cycling to and from school, to and from work. And they recognised what I think people are starting to recognise here in the UK is that you need dedicated cycle facilities. And at times, we will have to make hard decisions around sacrificing road space for cycle space. But the evidence is clear, you know, you can get people into their bikes. I've, I've pulled my bike out of the garage, me and the family, we now go, we've been cycling, the boys love it in particular. I seem to spend a lot of time pushing the little ones' bike around, but it's good nonetheless. So that culture shift can be done. It's going to take investment and we do, we are hoping that the big numbers that the government talk about will come to fruition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Davies. I've also now got a question from councillor Sarah Parkin to councillor Martin Hill, but I think on the chat, it says that councillor Parkin has left the meeting. Is that correct?
I think it is, Chair, actually. I've got an email from her. It's from Parker here.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Chair. Thank you, Rob. Thank you. I'll move on then to the next question, questioner, which is councillor Hugo Marfleet to councillor Patricia Bradwell.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I've got a question for Patricia. Obviously, the staff and carers have done an exceptional job in Lincolnshire in the whole of the adults world. Just would like to sort of know how we've managed with the sort of daycare centres and the sort of issues of not being able to fully operate those and how have those that normally go to the daycare centres have sort of been accommodated? If you could get an update on this service through this pandemic, please.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marfleet for that. Yes, we, very early on in the pandemic, it became obvious that actually parents and carers didn't want to send their children or spouses to the day centres because of the risk of getting the virus. So what we've done is, we've, our employers have been going out and supporting these people at home, being taking them for walks and doing activities with them, which has gone down really well with the families. I think, you know, we talk about thinking about how we might do things differently. And actually, these sorts of activities have really gone down well. I'm not saying that we won't want to use the day centres again because it's nice for these people to go to the day centre and mix with each other, go off swimming. But actually, doing the one-to-one activities, their carers have all said, you know, it's really been great for them. It's given the family a bit of relief, but also they've had sort of individual attention, which has really been welcomed by the families. So I think moving forward, we'll probably be bringing something to adult scrutiny about those new ways that we want to deliver services to some quite vulnerable young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that. The next question is from councillor Rob Parker to councillor Martin Hill.
Thank you, Chair, and congratulations on your new job. My question to the leader of the council is, in the middle of the biggest problem that this county has probably ever faced in relation to health, when all of local government resources and attention could and should have been directed at protecting the health of our people, why then did you choose to write to the Secretary of State for Housing and Local Government to raise the question of reorganisation of local government in Lincolnshire?
Well, first of all, thank you for the question. I do resent the implication that some work, something is not being done regarding, in response to the coronavirus crisis in Lincolnshire. That is certainly not the case. And actually, I think all of us, that's the county council and all partners, have actually responded in an exemplary fashion. And if councillor Parker has got some issues that he's aware of, we would be very grateful if he could then show us what they were. As I said in my earlier speech, the actual incidence of coronavirus in Lincolnshire has been very low, nearly one of the lowest in the country. And I'm, I do totally refute the implication there has been any, any, any reduction in terms of what should be done in terms of coronavirus. The government has been quite clear, has been quite clear for some time, that as we move out of the coronavirus outbreak and as we learn the lessons of what, how not only councils and businesses, but also the whole country can do better. And indeed, I've been to several meetings now, virtual meetings with various ministers, local government ministers, who've made it clear that they are keen that the economy picks up straight away and not only businesses but councils become more efficient. And it has been made very clear to us in Greater Lincolnshire, that is, they're looking at us as well. The good news out of all of this is that there was a threat that Greater Lincolnshire would in a sense be broken up and that the government was wanting North and North East Lincolnshire to choose between either going with Humberside, Lep, or staying with Lincolnshire, because the government made it very clear that that's, they would have to choose, all overlap, Lep areas would have to choose. So fortunately, because of the work we did in partnership with Greater North and North East Lincolnshire, we were all able to persuade ministers very clearly and working with MPs as well, that the future did lie with Greater Lincolnshire. And I think we have now established Greater Lincolnshire on the national map as somewhere as a distinct identity, and somewhere also where we can actually provide a lot of growth and a lot of, lots of benefits for the national scene. As part of that decision, it wasn't the final decision, there was a definite onus on Greater Lincolnshire to say, very good, you want to be part of, be seen as a distinct identity. It is now up to you to come forward with ideas how you are going to grow economically. And it was also pointed out to us because of the previous work that we'd done on the previous round of devolution, that we were in a good place in the eyes of government if agreement could be seen. And it was also made pretty clear that to those who went early in the process, because governments made it abundantly clear that that is the agenda, the devolution agenda is part of their national growth and recovery plan, those areas which went early in terms of looking at new way of a devolution agenda, they would actually probably be looked on quite favourably, but also indeed, there could be still some money available to encourage us to do so. So I think, I don't apologise for putting that letter in. I think it's the right time to do it. Has been no great work involved to date because the letter's gone in, we now wait for a response from government. And the coronavirus is also, is not just about dealing with today's problems, it's also looking to the future and seeing how we can do things better. And obviously, some more work will be involved when we finally, if we, when and if we get a response from government. But I make no apologies for it because we do need to look to the future as well as deal with the past.
Thank you. Right, councillor Colin Matthews to councillor Patricia Bradwell.
Hello, Tricia.
Hi.
Tricia, we know the government's been very generous in giving a billion pounds of additional funding to schools. And we know that 650 million of that is going to schools directly, either to trusts or to local authority maintained schools. There's an addition of 350 million pounds going for a tutoring programme. It's run by the Education Endowment Foundation. It's called the National Tutoring Programme. It's a, it's a combination of, well, it's four partners, basically, the Education Endowment Foundation, Sutton Trust, Impetus and Nesta. And it's focusing on disadvantaged pupils. And it looks a very good programme. It's offering 12 to 15 hours of personalised tuition in small groups. Are we, as a, as an authority, well placed to take advantage and engage with those partners or with this tutoring programme in essence? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. The answer is yes. The scheme, details of the scheme are yet to be published, but I know schools are quite very interested in taking up this tutoring programme. Schools will have to pay 25% of the cost of the, they've got a top-up to pay of the cost of the tutor. But I think this will be welcome because it is additional, additional resource that schools can use to actually do all that catch-up learning for children, for disadvantaged children. But I, you know, we, I was very pleased, I asked Heather the other day about how schools reacted to this, and she said very positively, very keen to be involved. And, you know, we will be, we'll be working with our schools to ensure that we get a good slice of this into the county for those children who need this extra tuition because of the lost learning that they've had over the last three months.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. And Mike, congratulations on your new role. And Tony, thank you for your work last year.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Right, I've got time for one more question, which is from councillor Richard Betroyd to councillor Martin Hill, leader. Over to you, Richard.
Thank you, Chairman. Martin, I think we can all say that we're really pleased that the red arrows are staying in Lincolnshire. I think that's a great move by the MOD and we look forward to seeing them over our skies. However, I do wonder and do worry about the, the future of Scampton as a base. And I wondered whether you had an update for us. Thank you.
No, I mean, it is very good news that the red arrows are staying in the county. And of course, we'll still be flying over Scampton in the reserved airspace there. And you are right, there then is a big question mark about the site of Scampton. We are, there's been no official news since last year from the Ministry of Defence in terms of their investigations regarding the ground conditions at Scampton and indeed, looking at a master plan situation as well. We're still working closely with West Lindsay District Council and the local MP, Edward Lee, about Scampton. And we really are waiting for some more news. I know that West Lindsay are now looking, having some focus community groups, so they can talk to the local community in terms of what the future is. But in terms of planning, I think there is nothing in the local plan, the local central Lincolnshire plan, which would allow large numbers of housing. But I think potentially, ground conditions permitting, which I think is a big, big if, there is potential for some limited housing, but also some imaginative use of that site, including looking after the heritage of the listed buildings there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Hill. Right, that brings the questions to, to an end. And I'm going to adjourn for lunch, as I said earlier. It is 20 minutes later than originally planned, but I did say I'd let the question time, questions run until they'd finished. Members should rejoin using the same link as they used this morning, please. And if we could join at least 10 minutes before the restart, and the restart will be at 10 to 2, 10 to 2, that's gives 30 minutes for lunch. But if we could come back at 10 to 2, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman.
Good afternoon, good afternoon members and officers, welcome back, calling the agenda for lunch. And we're going to have a roll call now, so I'll hand over to Nigel to conduct that roll call. Over to you, Nigel.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll conduct the roll call vote and I'll call out councillors' names in alphabetical order. Members are requested to only switch their microphone on clearly to say that they are present. So I'll begin with councillor Adams.
Present.
Councillor Aaron.
Present.
Councillor Ashton.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Austin.
Present.
Councillor Bowles.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Bockett.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Bradwell.
Present.
Councillor Brailsford.
Present.
Councillor Brewis.
Present.
Councillor Bridges.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Brockway.
Present.
Councillor Brooks.
Present.
Councillor Butroyd.
Present.
Councillor Corey.
Present.
Councillor Clark.
Present.
We've had apologies from councillor Cook. Councillor Cooper.
Present.
Councillor Coopland said his apologies this morning. Councillor Cullen.
Present.
Present.
Councillor Davy.
Present.
Councillor Davies.
Present.
Councillor Dobson.
Present.
Councillor Fido.
Present.
Councillor Fleetwood.
Present.
Councillor Fawkes.
Present.
Councillor Griggs. Councillor Griggs.
Present.
Councillor Grogock.
Present.
Councillor Hags.
Present.
Councillor Hill.
Present.
Councillor Kendrick.
Present.
Councillor Key.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Lawton. Councillor Lawton.
Present.
I've had apologies from councillor Macy. Councillor Marfleet.
Present.
Councillor Matthews.
Present.
Councillor Morn.
Present.
Councillor McNally. Councillor McNally. Councillor Mrs Newton.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Overton.
Present.
Councillor Oxbey.
Present.
Councillor Parker.
Present.
We've had apologies from councillor Parkin. Councillor Pepper.
Present.
Councillor Perrott and Williams.
Present.
Councillor Poll. Councillor Poll. Councillor Mrs Rawlins.
Present.
Councillor Christopher Reed.
Present.
Councillor Robert Reed.
Present.
Councillor Renshaw.
Present.
Councillor Rowe.
Present.
Councillor Skinner.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Snead.
Present.
Councillor Spencer. Councillor Spencer. Councillor Spratt.
Present.
Councillor Stokes.
Present.
Councillor Storey. Councillor Storey.
Present.
Councillor Strangle.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Talbot.
Present.
Councillor Thompson.
Present.
Councillor Charlotte Melo.
Present.
Councillor Turner. Councillor Turner. Councillor Whittington.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Wally.
Present.
Councillor Linda Wotton.
Present.
Councillor Ray Wotton.
Present.
Councillor Worth.
Present.
Councillor Young. Councillor Young.
Present.
Thank you. Can I just check, councillor Turner, were you present? No. And councillor Poll. And councillor McNally. No. Okay, that's it, that's the roll call, Chairman.
Thank you, thank you Nigel. Right, welcome back everyone, we'll move on to item 12 on the agenda, which is political balance on committees and subcommittees and allocation of places to political groups. And I'm going to pass that over to councillor Hill, our leader.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, just, there is a schedule, schedule two actually gives the full list of proposals. There are three main changes, that councillor Colin Matthews will become the chairman of the Public Rights of Way Committee. Scrutiny panel B, vice-chairman will be councillor Reed, councillor C Reed, councillor Chris Reed, and the vice-chairman of the flood committee will be councillor Robert Reed. So get your Reeds in the right order, the Reeds are on the march. Okay?
Yeah, that's all I've got to say, Chairman. Yeah, so that's moved by you and we, second, I believe, is councillor Mrs Brockway.
And thank you, Chairman, yes, just to support the changes and to let you know that councillor Fawkes will take a place on adults because of the new political balance. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Do I have any speakers?
Non-showed, Chairman.
Thank you. Right, I have no speakers, so I'll move on to the vote then. Do we have any abstentions? Anyone abstaining, please type abstain in chat.
There's nothing abstained, Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have anyone against? If you're against, please type against in chat.
Nothing in there, Chairman.
No, okay then, thank you. So there are no abstentions and no votes against, so that is carried under the rules of place today. Right, I'll move on to item 11 then, appointment of chairman and vice-chairman of committees and subcommittees, except the Lincolnshire Health and Wellbeing Board and the Health and Food Committee for Lincolnshire. And again, I've got a mover as councillor Martin Hare. To you, leader.
Yeah, sorry, I think I got the wrong way around on that motion, but obviously I think Jackie Brockway was correct, that I think someone needs to just switch off their microphone, please. So this is, as I said before, the places and of course, taken as read as the previous item.
You're muted, Chairman.
I've got councillor Mrs Bradwell to second.
Yes, yes, Miss Chairwoman.
Thank you. Right, do I have any speakers? I don't think I've got anybody indicating. Katina's. No, nobody indicating, so, right, we'll move on to. Right, we'll move on to voting then. Do I have any abstentions? Please indicate abstain in the chat.
Not appear, Chairman.
No. Do I have any against, anybody against, please indicate in the chat against.
Not appear, Chairman.
No, no, therefore I'll, that item is carried then, with no against and no abstentions. Right, moving on then to item 13, calendar of meetings for 2020-21. I have a mover as councillor Martin Hill for this, over to you, leader.
I just moved, Chairman.
Thank you. And I've got councillor Mrs Bradwell, Tricia to second.
I'll second that, Mr.
Thank you. Right, do I have any speakers? I don't think I do.
None appear, Chairman.
No, right. Are there any abstentions? We're over to the vote now, are there any abstentions on this?
None in the chat, Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any votes against?
None in the chat, Chairman.
Thank you. Therefore, there's no abstentions, no votes against, so again, under the rules applying today, that is carried. So we will move on to the next item on the agenda, item 14, which is the appointment of parent governor representative. And I've got councillor Mrs Bradwell, Tricia moving that.
Yeah, I just moved that, Mr Chairman.
Right, and the secondary, I've got councillor Rob Kendrick as down as second in. Rob?
Happy to second that, Mr Chairman, it's great to have that lady on board, thank you.
Thank you. So we move on then, and have I any speakers on that item?
None showing, Chairman.
Right, any abstentions? Please type abstain in the chat box.
No abstentions appearing, Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any votes against? Again, please type against in the chat box.
None appearing in the chat, Chairman.
Right, so there's no abstentions, no votes against, so I declare that that is carried as per the rules applying today. Right, item 15 now then, appointment to outside bodies. And that's, this is a report by the executive director for resources, which has been circulated. I've got councillor Hill, again, Martin Hill as moving.
Yeah, just the one change, Chairman, with the sad demise of councillor Strange, replacements on the AONAB body, which will be councillor Marfleet and councillor McNally.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, and I've got councillor Mrs Bradwell to as a seconder.
Yeah, second that, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Right, again, do I have any speakers?
No, Chairman.
Right, on to the vote then. Do I have anybody abstaining? Please type abstain in the chat box.
None showing, Chairman.
Right, are there any members against wishing to vote against? Please type against in the chat box.
None showing, Chairman.
Right, and I, that is carried, that motion is carried as per the rules applying today. The item 16 now then, the overview scrutiny annual report 2019 to 2020. And this is a report by the statutory scrutiny officer, which has been circulated. And I've got, I'm going to hand over to councillor Rob Parker to move this. Over to you, Rob.
Fine, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. This report is in a new style format, 16 pages, and it's intended to try to brighten up and liven up the good work that scrutiny does throughout the year, scrutiny. Just a quick reminder, scrutiny is there to do four things, challenge, we know about that, give voice to public concerns, support improvement in services, and provide an independent review. So just to go through some of the key points, if we look at, look at the report, we can see that some of the highlights of individual scrutiny committees are contained there. Essentially, it's work that's done by 74% of non-executive councillors, and during the year, we considered 232 reports in scrutiny all the way through. When we look at some of the important things that have happened, we can pick up the question of the way that the expounding Western Relief Road in highways and transport was looked at, that's on page, excuse me. 114, the corporate support services contract, which was looking afresh at how we engage with outside contractors and overview the work that they do. In short, there's lots there that we can look at in terms of scrutiny. And that's a report about what's happened so far. If we look ahead to the coming year, we can expect that the coronavirus pandemic will provide all scrutiny committees with ways of looking at how we tackle it, and particularly, as has been mentioned on a couple of occasions before, how we can reflect the new world and perhaps look at scrutiny, different aspects of scrutiny, and whether or not scrutiny has got to, in a sense, change its role. I think I'd want to finish off by saying thank you to everybody that does scrutiny work, particularly the chair of the, sorry, the vice chair of the overview and scrutiny management board, and councillor Ray Wotton, who took this report through the overview and scrutiny management board. But lots of offices across the council are engaged, particularly in the scrutiny team in democratic services and across the whole of the areas of work that goes on within directorates. So I just wanted to finish off by saying thank you to everybody who's contributed towards effective scrutiny on the county council in the last year. I think the only other point I'd want to make is formally, I move that the overview and scrutiny annual report for 2019-20 be approved.
Chairman, your mic is muted.
Trying to, yeah, I've got councillor Ray Wotton there as second in this, over to you, councillor Wotton.
Yes, thank you very much, Chief Chairman. My honour, I just want to congratulate you and your vice chairman of being here.
Thank you.
And also thank councillor Parker for his kind comments, it's been a real pleasure to be his vice chairman during the year, and I formally second this report.
Thank you. Right, have we any speakers on this item?
Yes, Chairman, we have councillor Martin Hill.
Councillor Martin Hill, councillor Hill.
Just thank you, just briefly to say, Chairman, I thank all the members of all the scrutiny committees for all the work they've done over the last year, and I genuinely can tell you that we do take their considerations and recommendations very seriously and do change ours as appropriate.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
None showing, Chairman.
Thank you. Right, we'll move on to the vote then. Have we any abstentions, please? Please type abstain in the chat box.
None showing, Chairman.
Right, have we any votes against, please? Again, please vote against or type against in the chat box.
None showing, Chairman.
Thank you, there's no abstentions or no votes against, that is carried as agreed for the rules today, applying today. Right, on to the item 18 on the agenda, executive decision, rule 17, special urgency. And this was a report by the leader of the council, has been circulated, and I'm going to hand over to councillor Hill to move.
Chairman, have you missed out item 17?
All right. Sorry, yes, I have, we'll go back. I'm getting a move on, thank you for that, I do apologise. That's the second time I had to apologise today. Item 17, the scrutiny review report, overview scrutiny at Lincolnshire County Council. And this report by the executive director for resources has been circulated, and councillor Mrs Angela Newton is going to move this, over to you, Angela.
Thanks, Chairman. It's been my privilege this year to chair panel B again, and we did what I think is quite an important piece of work, we started last October and finished late spring. And I believe we've really gone in depth here, and we've come up with some more recommendations that are of all party support. It's been to the overview and scrutiny management board and to the executive, and now I'll present to the council, 1, 2, 3 and 4. I'm happy to read them if you want me to, but you've had them, Chairman, so I'm happy to move what's been proposed.
Yeah, move those 1, 2, 3 as listed there.
And 4.
Fine, thank you. Have I, as a seconder, I've got councillor Matthews to second.
Yes, I'm very pleased to second this, I'd like to thank the Chair for the excellent way she led the scrutiny review board. This review was followed the publication of statute guidance by the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government in May 2019. I think we did a thorough deep dive to make sure that we were in confirmation with that and in agreement with that, and where we felt that we had got a better process, we elected to choose that, so I'm very happy to second this.
Thank you, thank you for that. Do I have any speakers on this?
Yes, Chairman, yes, Chairman, we have councillor Renshaw.
Councillor Renshaw, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I support the report in general, there's only one reference that I would like to make, and that's with regards to the Health Scrutiny Committee. Clearly, there's issues that's come to Health Scrutiny Committee, such as the non-emergency passenger transport conveyance, and one that's closest to most of our hearts in this room is the Grantham Hospital. Clearly, the Health Authority takes absolutely no notice of our deliberations, and it's so frustrating for all the members of that to feel that they're spending the time worthwhile scrutinising what is going on. It's not a matter of decisions so much, but it's the attitude, and time and time again, and it's so frustrating, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Renshaw. And have I any other speakers?
None showing, Chairman.
Right.
Sorry, councillor, councillor Parker has raised his hand.
All right, thank you, councillor Rob Parker.
Thank you, I'll be brief. On page 67 of the report, it's about relationship with partners, and that's under the general discussion point about safeguarding boards, scrutiny subgroups. And there's a point raised by Mark Jones, the Police and Crime Commissioner, which is about how we maintain relationships between the Police and Crime Commissioner and our local authority. And there's mention of one option for the developing a partnership provided by the Domestic Abuse Bill. I think that this is a report that's final, but I think the door ought to be left open to the county council, particularly in the area, the key area of safeguarding, for there to be an ongoing relationship between the Police and Crime Commissioner and the local authority.
Thank you for that, Rob.
Chairman, councillor Mrs Bradwell wishes to speak.
Yeah, okay, thank you, councillor Mrs.
Yes, Mr Chairman, just to assure councillors that the Police and Crime Commissioner did use to attend this safeguarding scrutiny, but he, we are going to put together, as you've just said, this new domestic abuse partnership board, which the government has just put a bill through Parliament, but the Police Commissioner also sits on the Health and Wellbeing Board as well, where things come up. So I think there is a close working relationship with the Police and Crime Commissioner, and we would want that to continue, because obviously, he does sit a little bit outside of the general, you know, he's not a police officer, and so I would want to assure councillors that, you know, our Police and Crime Commissioner will be included in scrutiny pieces of work that we do.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
None showing, Chairman.
Right, go back to councillor Newton, do you wish to sum up on this, councillor Newton? Taking into account the points raised?
Yeah, thank you. I think actually they covered the point that councillor Renshaw raised about, he thought perhaps some people who go before some of the committees are not so helpful as others. I think there is provision in there to continue to talk to people and probably even talk to new people. And I do believe that in the past, our scrutiny committees have talked to the Police and Crime Commissioner or members from the police. I think there is provision there to cover everything. I would like to thank everybody who served on the committee and the officers, and look forward to our next piece of work, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that. That's been summed up, so I would, I would ask, I'm getting feedback, I don't know what's happened, somebody got a mic, that's better. Right, move on to voting now. Have we got anybody who's abstaining? Please type abstain in the chat box.
None showing, Chairman.
Thank you. Have we got anybody who wishes to vote against? Please type against in the chat box.
None showing, Chairman.
Thank you. Therefore, I declare that that is carried according to the rules that we've got in place today. Right, I will now get back on to item 18, and item 18, the executive decision on rule 17, special urgency, and a report by the leader of the council has been circulated. And I'll hand over to councillor Martin Hill to present.
Thank you, Chairman, this is a rarely used procedure, where due to the urgency of the decision required, there is facilities for the executive member normally, or indeed an officer, to make a decision, but there is a sort of safety valve in that that has to have the agreement of the appropriate chairman of the appropriate scrutiny committee, which in this case was the Public Protection Scrutiny Committee chaired by Nigel Pepper. In essence, surprising, this is the only urgent decision that had to be made during the coronavirus so far, which I think is a credit to the preparedness of the county council and partners in terms of ready for all the work that the, has been done through emergency planning. And in essence, the, obviously, early days of the coronavirus, when it was nearly at its peak, there was advice from our public health colleagues in Lincolnshire that there was a requirement for some building work, which has to be, had started early, so that the work could be finished if required. So that is what this decision was about, so it is for the council to be aware of, not the actuality of the decision, but the fact that it was done under urgent procedures. So I'll leave it at that, Chairman.
Thank you, thank you for that. I've got councillor Nigel Pepper down here to second. Councillor Pepper.
Thank you, Chairman, I'm happy to second that, thank you.
Thank you. Right, we'll move on then, do we have any speakers on this?
None showing, Chairman.
Thank you. Right, therefore I will move on to the vote on this. Can I ask, are there any councillors wishing to abstain? If you won't do, please type abstain in the chat box.
None showing, Chairman.
Thank you. Have we any councillors wishing to vote against this? If you do, please type against in the chat box.
Nothing showing, Chairman.
Thank you. Therefore, I declare that that is carried according to the rules we have in place today. Right, on to item 19 now then, which is motions on notice submitted in accordance with the council's constitution. And we've got two motions on notice, take the first one now, which is a motion by councillor Mark Whittington, and I will hand over to Mark to present and move the motion. Over to you, councillor Whittington. And I will hand over to Mark to um uh present and move the motion. Over to you councillor Whittington.
Oh, thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. Um, yeah, it's a very, very um simple motion. It's, 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 it's raised to, to an issue this council has considered before. I'll just run through the motion and just provide a little bit of background context um as I'm going through. It, it is now nearly four years since Grantham Hospital A and E was closed overnight on a temporary basis, uh, the middle of August two thousand and sixteen. And during this time, councillors, local campaign groups, residents have been, ha- ha- have been a number of rallies held in the town, I think it's three. There's been petitions delivered to, to number ten Downing Street, uh, one that includes sixty thousand names uh opposing what the ULHT board were proposing to do to A and E Grantham Hospital, which I think shows the, the extent of the opposition locally to these proposals. Um, a lot of us have attended the ULHT board meetings and the CCG meetings to uh hold them to account and to call for Grantham Hospital A and E to be uh um uh reopen on a twenty-four seven basis. Maybe aware recently that, that because of the, the, the COVID nineteen um situation, it's been alluded to uh earlier. Um, a number of changes uh at Grantham Hospital. Uh, a- a- and in order to create a green site um at Grantham Hospital, which will be used primarily to treat non-urgent cancer patients from, from across the county. The situation is that um in order i- in order to maintain that green status, that, that, that COVID um status across the um, um site, um, there's going to be restrictions imposed upon the use of the emergency centre at Grantham. Um, i- in reality, it means that i- i- instead of being um offering um an A and E service between eight thirty uh and six thirty at night, uh, it's going to be turned into a twenty-four hour walking UTC uh urgent treatment centre. The main concern, I think, that a lot of residents of Grantham and, and the surrounding villages have got is, is that this, this, this proposal i- is really within the healthy conversation published by the local health community is the preferred option um for urgent um treatments of Grantham going forward. It's, it's been seen, this has been seen by a lot of local Grantham residents, and I've had a lot of people contact me about it as a very convenient backdoor way for the trust board to, to introduce their preferred option. Um, that they say on a temporary basis without going through a proper full public consultation uh on the issue. I think that is, uh, that is a real major concern. As part of the proposals as well, um, it means that, that all the medical beds as well at Grantham Hospital, in effect, will be, will be closed down, uh, and the staff will be relocated to other sites within Lincolnshire. And again, the concern of, of local Grantham residents is that once these medical beds have been um moved around hospital a- a- and the staff relocated, that, 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 that they won't come back. And again, medical beds is again, an issue within the healthy conversation documentation. It's unfortunate as well that because of the restrictions imposed by the current COVID nineteen situation, local campaign groups, residents cannot meet together to sort of discuss what they want to do to try and oppose it. Um, and also it does make it very, very difficult for if, if, if the trust and the CCG were genuinely interested in public consultation, to actually hold any for effective consultation because of the restrictions the social distancing are likely to impose. Just, just a few numbers um from the documentation that the trust board circulated. About four and a half thousand, four thousand six, six, six hundred and three patients, and normally ten Grantham A and E will be relocated, will have to go to other sites as a result of this. And it won't just be to Boston Pilgrim because public interaction also refers to sites out of county as well. So potentially for Grantham residents, that could mean Peterborough, it could mean Nottingham. This is very, very difficult, you know, for people who don't, who may not have access to uh private cars, who have to rely on, who have to rely on public transport. The general feeling I, I, I've got, it's been going on for so long now. And if these temporary measures are reviewed in a year's time, it would have been nearly five years since Grantham A and E was first, first saw a reduction in service. But Grantham people have just, and it comes over time and time to me, have lost faith, confidence and trust in the board of ULHT and the CCG. This is a point I, I, I specifically raised to both John Turner and Andrew Morgan at the last Health Scrutiny Committee meeting. And they, uh, whilst they said yes, they, that they, that they understand the trust and confidence is breaking down. It's a real, it is a real issue. And I think that that does cause awful lot of concern for Grantham people. The motion also refers to the extra funding that's been made available to Boston A and E, which is great news, the nearly twenty-two million pounds extra. But again, the motion also wants some reassurance around, around the future um um pr- around future provision of service also at, at Pilgrim A and E, given this level of uh of proposed investment. Because obviously if patients from Grantham have been referred to Pilgrim and also to Lincoln County, it then puts pressure on those services and then, and then affects residents from the Boston area and the Lincoln area as well. You might find it harder to access uh the A and Es of Pilgrim and Lincoln County. So whilst that's, that's welcome, what the, what the motion really, really wants, um, a- and I won't go through the uh points in detail because they're listed out, but it's really to ask the leader of the council to contact both Mr Morgan and Mr Turner to um, uh, on those four um uh items contained as the uh action points. Um, and I hope that this motion will be supported by uh all of the council. As I say, it, it specifically refers to uh both Grantham and Boston Pilgrim. But of course it affects, because of the domino effect, it potentially affect, also affects all the residents of Lincolnshire. So that's, Mr Chairman, I, I will uh, I will conclude. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mark. Right, um, I need a, a second now, so I'm going over to councillor Ray Wotton, who I've got listed to second.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm really happy to second councillor Whittington's uh motion. Before I start, may I place on record my thanks and appreciation to the NHS for their professional way they have served all of us, risking their lives on a daily basis, treating our residents in the county. Mr Chairman, along with colleagues, I have spoken on many occasions about the future of Grantham Hospital. The ULHT board made a decision on the eleventh of June to implement emergency powers to turn Grantham Hospital into a non-COVID nineteen green site as a temporary measure until the thirty-first of March two thousand and twenty-one. Unfortunately, the board failed to listen to councillors and campaign groups' concerns. This will mean the closure of Grantham A and E, losing medical beds and become a twenty-four seven urgent treatment centre working alongside ambulatory care. The green site will deal with cancer and urgent elective patients. As someone who's had prostate cancer, I fully understand the need for those on the waiting list to be treated as soon as possible. It was reported yesterday by Andrew Morgan, CEO, that there were three hundred and fifty patients still waiting on a list in Lincolnshire. Grantham Hospital has been closed temporarily overnight since the sixteenth of August two thousand and sixteen, nearly four years next month. We believe this new temporary for the hospital translates into permanent. However, Andrew Morgan, CEO, has stated over the past few weeks, we are not looking to downgrade the site. It is not some backdoor way to downgrade Grantham. And he is not looking to make the downgrade of Grantham of A and E unit per- permanent. Mr Chairman, I visited the UTC yesterday and found only six patients waiting for treatment. Staff outnumbered patients. I was informed that the unit was safe and that patient numbers were improving. But I got the feeling that staff were not allowed to speak to people. Mr Chairman, as councillor Whittington has said, four thousand six hundred and three patients, ninety percent of total of those who go to Grantham will now have to go elsewhere. In the figures in the, in the trust board who presented to the Health Scrutiny Committee, two thousand nine hundred and fifty of those will have to travel to Peterborough Hospital. And one thousand one hundred and eighty-seven will have to go to Lincoln, a hospital which can't, can't make its four hour waiting time. And that was one of the worst record in England for dealing with patients. Um, Mr Chairman, I was contacted by Mrs S, who contacted me saying she was charged fifty-eight pounds to take a taxi for Lincoln, money she could not afford. Mrs B, an elderly pensioner, who is now expected to have her appointment at Lincoln at nine o'clock in the morning, instead of going to Grantham, and she doesn't drive. So how does she get there? On Monday, the Facebook campaign exploded with angry residents who had appointments changed to Lincoln, wondering how they're going to get there and how they'll be, why can't they be treated at Grantham and how they're going to get back. I'm thankful to these councillors at the last council meeting supporting my previous motion. And I acknowledge the need for cancer patients to be seen and treated as soon at Grantham. But as soon as possible, Grantham Hospital should be reinstated back to its current position on the first of April two thousand and twenty or before and hold a public consultation as soon as possible on a future. Finally, Mr Chairman, ULHT should listen to our residents. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Right, uh, I've got several speakers. Um, and the first one is councillor Robin Renshaw. So over to you, Robin.
Thank you, chairman. Well, uh, we're, we're pleased to support this motion. And as councillor Wotton said, there's no criticism of the excellent NHS staff that's, that's, that Ray Wotton referred to. The Labour group supports the motion, but it needs to go to a higher level than local managers, who are only tasked to manage. And I put that in capital letters, manage, because clearly they're not managing resources which are provided from and high. The previous chair of the Health Scrutiny Committee, Christine Talbot, wrote to Jeremy Hunt and still couldn't have got nowhere. So the problem is well over four years old and has only so far merited expedient action. What would it take to achieve the correct, proper and equal solution in line with what standards most of the rest of the UK enjoys? In essence, the, the management of patients with clinical consultants is a football and it's been kicked around. One of my constituents, she had a fracture of the arm, which meant that she couldn't look after herself properly. She finally got a consultant uh appointment after uh my wife advised her to talk to the Pall Service. And she got this appointment with the consultant and she, he said to her that he's got several patients that day, but it could have taken many more times that number of patients. Now, that's a waste of resource. We can't afford uh in these times to have patients uh not be, not being dealt with in an efficient manner. And that's just indicative of, of the problem which exists in, in the NHS. And as I say, I, the Labour group does support this motion. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you for that, councillor Renshaw. Uh, councillor Overton is, I've got next. Councillor Marion Overton.
Thank you. Sorry, I had some difficulty there. Can, can you hear me all right? This is about. Thank you. Um, I'd just like to support the motion. This has been a really big issue for my area too. Part of my residents do normally, or would normally have come uh towards Grantham and the other part towards Lincoln, so we are between the two. And I was on the primary care trust when we fought this battle before, uh, last time somewhat successfully. But I think what's really vital for us to recognise is that the NHS do a great job and they have said uh that they want to provide services as close as possible to where people are. Because the time you've got the extra distance and complications with travel and time and all of that, it adds risk for our residents. And that's not good enough. I do want to uh support the motion. The impact of reducing this service on the, on Lincoln, for example, which already, uh, you know, has its targets to meet and is already not necessarily finding that easy. It's very important because knock-on effects on the other services make it very difficult for everyone. Um, so just to support that point and to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Right, um, the next speaker I've got is councillor Kev Clark. Over to you, councillor Clark.
Thank you. Councillors, we're actually bringing this motion forward. People of Grantham and the surrounding areas have been totally let down over this issue.
Yeah, councillor Clark, we can see you. Yeah, we can hear.
Thank you. No?
Yes, that's better.
Right, uh, I said, I started off by saying I'd like to thank the councillors for bringing this motion forward. It shows that people of Grantham and the surrounding areas have been totally let down over this issue. I wonder if the same principles would have been applied if Grantham was in the south of the country. The need should be addressed no matter where they live. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that, councillor Clark. Councillor Brewis is the next person I've got indicated to speak.
Uh, thank you very much, Dave. And I think this is, whilst we admire, I'm sure, the idea of having a green site that's safe for people. Um, and if anybody really believes this crisis is going to be over by next Easter, April two thousand and twenty-one, I tend not to agree with them. Of course, this has been going on for a very long time at Grantham. Started off because of staffing problems. I, I regard myself as lucky, all right, I'm only nine miles from King's Lynn. But it's the distance that is the huge bother. Grantham is just a few miles from the Nottinghamshire border. And the length of the astronomical journey for someone who has a, 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 a condition that needs treatment for some time, for example, from Sutton-on-Sea or um Mabelthorpe, is going to be a huge disincentive. It seems strange to me, and it's just been mentioned actually earlier. They've managed to build an emergency um COVID hospital in London in ten days. Well, can I suggest they find a ten acre site, perhaps in the middle of the county, somewhere between Martin and Woodhall, and build a green site there. They can do it in ten days. Just an idea. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Brewis. Thank you for that. Councillor Alison Austin, got you listed next, Alison.
Thank you. Can you see and hear me? Thank you.
Yes, I can hear you. I can see you now, yeah.
Right, thank you. Um, I don't really have much to add because I think it's all being said. Uh, I think there is a tendency, isn't there, for the authorities um nationally, if you like, to disregard the rural nature of our county and the difficulty with transport. And of course, also, we are well aware of whatever happens in one hospital within our county, there is a knock-on effect on the others. So I'll just leave it at that. This is an important, this is an important motion to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. Right, I've got councillor Linda Wotton uh indicating to speak. Linda.
Thank you, chairman. Um, Mr Chairman, congratulations on your new appointment. And I wish you and Jackie a very successful year. And also I say thank you goes to councillor Bridges and Trina for representing us over the last year.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, thank you. Mister Chairman, I'm saddened that Grantham now has no A and E. But installed at great speed, we now have an urgent treatment centre, sourced through the CCG, run by a community team, which I'm sure will do a good job. But I'm also sad for the dispersed hospital staff, the campaigners and the people of Grantham and surrounding areas who feel their concerns and voices haven't been taken into consideration. However, we have to understand that ULHT need to address the backlog of cancer appointments and treatments within a green site. Andrew Morgan, the chief executive, says. Andrew Morgan, the chief executive, says we are all cynical and sceptical that urgent treatment centre is only temporary. I wonder why? The cynic in me suspects the result at the end of this period will be the change is a great success, there has been no increase in A&E patients presenting elsewhere, the people of Grantham have accepted the changes, goodbye A&E. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I support the motion, and I thank all our colleagues for their support.
Thank you, thank you for that. Right, councillor Bob Adams is indicated, I've got on the list next.
Thank you very much, Chairman. My congratulations to your elevation, I hope you have a very happy period of office with your wife Jackie.
Thank you.
I obviously support this motion wholeheartedly, Chairman, as I did the silent protest at Grantham Hospital a few days ago, when there were hundreds of people there supporting the staff. And I think we all had our thanks, and heartfelt thanks to the staff for seeing us through, and continuing to see us through this pandemic. The point I want to pick up, Chairman, if I may, is the point raised by councillor Ray Wooton, when he mentioned trust and confidence, and that has been totally lost by the general public, and it would appear from the other speakers that that also applies pretty well across the county. And I think that is well merited, Chairman. I know from one of our district councillors who works at the hospital that there has been no consultation whatsoever with the staff over these changes. And indeed, there's been very little or no engagement or consultation with the general public. I'm sure councillor Hill will agree that if this council had conducted itself in such a way on a most important issue affecting all residents in Greater Lincolnshire, Chairman, we would have been castigated and rightly castigated. And I think that is the emphasis and the point I wish to make. We cannot have any trust in this board, Chairman, while ever they do not conduct themselves in a proper way. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, thanks for that. Right, I've got councillor Martin Hill indicated next, as far as I can see.
Thank you, Chairman. You've just confirmed that obviously if this motion is passed, and it looks like it will be, I'm more than happy to write to the local NHS leaders. I think it was mentioned that obviously nationally, but certainly the two MPs, main area is Grantham Hospital, Gareth Davies and the Seavison High Com MP Caroline Johnson, have both, this has been raised with ministers and publicly in Parliament, to make sure, clarify what is meant by temporary. And I think the history of this seems to be a bit of a movable feast. I'm very, very disappointed that we are at this stage, and yet again, we've had to have this motion. I don't think anybody's totally surprised about the change from an A&E into an urgent treatment centre. I think that was always expected, although not welcomed. Although I have to say, the one positive out of all this is we will have, Grantham and the area will have a 24-hour walk-in service, which is some progress. I think the transport's very important, not just for people going out of Grantham, but also for all those people across Lincolnshire who have got to get to Grantham. And I'm not sure the Health Scrutiny Committee got sufficient reassurance that that is going to be catered for in an appropriate manner for those people who can't get themselves there. When I think what is really disappointing is the surprise that the closing of all the medical beds on the grounds that they're all needed for Covid coronavirus. Well, I think we're nearly in single figures now, the amount of patients who are in hospital beds with coronavirus. And whilst I fully accept that we need to be all prepared for a potential second wave, to me, there is no justification for removing all those medical beds, and which is why I lose patience frankly with the boards and the way it's been rushed through under the cover of coronavirus emergency powers. And I think there's also a worry now that other areas of Lincolnshire hospitals, particularly Pilgrim Hospital, there could be other issues going on. So I think it's pretty poor show, frankly. It wasn't necessary to close all those beds. I've not heard anybody convince me, convince me that some of those medical beds could have remained supporting the urgent treatment centre. And it did seem to be a very unnecessary and silly move, frankly. And I hope that that will be reversed. But as has been stated, staff are being moved around, and it will be more difficult to bring them back. So we do try and work positively with our NHS colleagues, but we do require them to be open, honest, and transparent about what they're doing. And if they are going to spring little surprises like this on us, it doesn't bode well for future amicable working.
Thank you, thank you for that. Right, councillor Adam Stokes, I've got listed next, so Adam, over to you.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and I will add my congratulations to yourself as well.
Thank you.
I fully endorse what councillor Whittingham and councillor Wooton, Ray Wooton, have said. I feel that the United Lincolnshire Health Trust has used the Covid legislation to do exactly what has been intended all along. And it has helped that they haven't needed to do the consultation for it. The closing of wards due to this will mean a loss of beds, and I am really concerned that these will never return to our hospital at the end of the temporary period, which I do not believe will be temporary. So services will not come back for our residents, many of whom will not be able to get to other hospitals. I do appreciate and I do welcome the cancer treatment, but as the leader has specified and stated in the Health Scrutiny Board, that it's going to be very difficult for some residents to get to Grantham. And I do believe that that is also an issue. But I am really, really concerned about the changes that have been made at Grantham Hospital, and I fully support this motion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, thank you councillor Stokes. Right, and I've got, lastly on my list at the moment is councillor Sue Woolley.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. And goes without saying that I'm going to support my colleagues and everything that they've said. And I think that there's those issues around trust and confidence. We wouldn't be here if we hadn't been told some time ago that there were only going to be temporary measures as far as A&E was concerned in Grantham. And what's happened is just not what we were told would happen. I accept completely that actually at a local health manager's level, i.e. the trust, Andrew Morgan, and indeed the CCG CEO John Turner, their hands are tied. They have been instructed under the Covid emergency measures, they have got to provide a Covid-free environment somewhere within the trust. And I believe that this is possibly just the least worst option. Unfortunately, and I completely agree with my Grantham colleagues, that cynically, you can't help but feel that there are elements of the Covid move that are also sitting very similarly around the acute services review. And for me, as well as writing to Andrew and indeed John, I do believe that it's their line managers, and indeed at a national level, it is the NHS England that should be held to account and be answerable. They want to blanket, I can't even say an equitable level of service, but they just want us to do exactly the same all over the country. It's impossible. And whilst we fully appreciate that they need to provide sides, then we've got to do something that works for Lincolnshire. Absolutely are we going to support our residents who have had to anxiously wait for their operations that have been cancelled time and time again? Of course, they must have them as quickly as possible, and we will always support them in that matter. But we really, really have got to get our health colleagues to sit with us and understand that Lincolnshire needs a fully functioning service. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Woolley. Right, I've got no one else indicating to speak on this. So I think what we do now is we all go to the vote, and Nigel West will carry out the roll call vote. And members are requested to only switch on their microphone and clearly state for, against, or abstain when their name is called. So I'll hand over to you, Nigel.
Thank you, Chairman. As you said, I will now conduct a roll call vote, and I will call out the councillors' names in alphabetical order. Members are requested to only switch on their microphone and clearly state for, against, or abstain when their name is called. Councillor Adams.
For.
Councillor Aaron.
For.
Councillor Ashton.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Austin.
For.
Councillor Bowles.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Bokeh.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Bradwell.
For.
Councillor Brailsford.
For.
Councillor Bruis.
For.
Councillor Bridges.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Brockway.
For.
Councillor Brooks.
For.
Councillor Bootroyd.
For.
Councillor Corey.
For.
Councillor Clark.
For.
Councillor Cooper. Councillor Cooper?
I think she might have left the meeting, let me just have a look. Let's see.
Councillor Cullen.
For.
Councillor Davy.
For.
Councillor Davies.
For.
Councillor Dobson. Councillor Fido.
For.
Councillor Fleetwood.
For.
Councillor Folkes.
For.
Councillor Griggs.
For.
Councillor Brokoff.
For.
Councillor Hagues.
For.
Councillor Hill.
For.
Councillor Kendrick.
For.
Councillor Key.
For.
Councillor Lawton.
For.
Councillor Marfleet.
For.
Councillor Matthews.
For.
Councillor Moore.
For.
Councillor McNally.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Newton.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Overton.
Sorry, for, got the delay on it, for.
Councillor Oxbie.
For.
Councillor Parker.
For.
Councillor Pepper.
For.
Councillor Rawlins.
For.
Councillor Christopher Reed.
For.
Councillor Robert Reed.
For.
Councillor Renshaw.
For.
Councillor Rowe.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Sneath. Councillor Mrs. Seeth. Councillor Spratt.
For.
Councillor Stokes.
For.
Councillor Storey.
For.
Councillor Strangle.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Talbot.
For.
Councillor Thompson.
For.
Councillor Trollopeh.
For.
Councillor Turner. Councillor Whittington.
For.
Councillor Mrs. Woolley.
For.
Councillor Linda Wooton.
For.
Councillor Ray Wooton.
For.
Councillor Worth.
For.
Councillor Yon.
For.
Are there any councillors present who I haven't called the name out? That motion is carried. I see councillor Cooper has a hand up, Chairman.
Yeah, councillor Cooper, Paula Cooper, do you wish to speak?
No, it was simply to affirm it was four.
Right, that's carried, Chairman.
Thank you. I'll declare that motion carried then, as laid out. So I'll move on to the second motion on notice. And this is a motion by councillor Rob Parker of the Labour Group. Over to you, Rob.
Okay, thank you. The motion before is about Lincolnshire County Council's response in relation to children's services to the coronavirus pandemic. I think I'd want to begin by thanking a number of officers in children's services and the resources directorate for their professionalism and expertise in providing advice in the preparation of this motion. I think I want to start, actually, by saying what we know. And I think it's fair to say that we know that many children and their families have been affected by the coronavirus pandemic in Lincolnshire. That's clear. We know, as councillor Bradwell said this morning, that children in Lincolnshire have a lot of catching up to do. We also know that a lot of work is necessary for all schools in Lincolnshire to be ready for the start of the new school year. And something we know historically, we know that Lincolnshire County Council is underfunded in relation to allocation of money to children's services, currently to the tune of £95 a primary school child and £217 a secondary school child compared to the English average. So we know those things, and I just want to contrast what we know with what we think might be the case if we listen to Gavin Williamson, the Secretary of State for Education, who said on the 9th of June in the House of Commons, when he made a statement, that he expected normality would resume in September in English schools. I don't think that many people will agree with that, but if it's by then though, a lot of children in Lincolnshire will have been without seeing a teacher, been inside a classroom, and they will have been without education for the best part of six months. So I think it's fair to say, to make an argument, the beginning of an argument, that something needs doing, particularly in relation to disadvantaged children. One of the things that we've noticed is during the three months of the coronavirus period, from March to June, is that 2039 English, sorry, Lincolnshire school-aged children became eligible for free school meals. And that's because of the downturn in the economy and the families qualifying for free school meals. That takes us to 18,500 children in Lincolnshire are now eligible for free school meals. So in a sense, that's the background. So the question then is, do we want to do anything about it in order to provide some form of support in the intervening period between now and September? And then again, extra investment from September onwards? Those two complementary features make up our motion. We set out clear proposals to doing something. I think it's fair to argue that we have to recognise that not all children have access to what we might call educational support outside of the school environment. Educationally stimulating resources are not always available at home. I think it's fair to say that children from disadvantaged backgrounds sometimes have problems accessing IT equipment, having their own physical space, and do not always have parental support. We argue, as in the first part of this motion, that it's essential that the council makes every effort to reduce the impact of the disruption of education because of coronavirus. So we're setting out a plan, a clear plan, which has been supported and helped, I'm not necessarily saying anymore, by officers who, when asked the question about what could we do more if finance and political support was there? These are the arguments that have been put forward, and we included some of our own. So it's about summer holiday provision, or sessional places over six weeks, to enable children to catch up so that they are better prepared when they go back to school in September. Out-of-school provision from 3.30 to 6 each weekday, once the children are back at school, to again help them to catch up, particularly in relation to those vulnerable children. We go on to talk about maternity services, and I'm not going to challenge anybody to say that it's not necessary for me to read this out, but I want actually to make the point that there are a variety of services here, including improving maternity services in more of our children's centres to combat disadvantage. Outreach work at children's centres is also included, and we want to make sure that across the county, that we distribute our resources in a way that meets the greatest need. One-to-one direct advice and support for families who are not willing to engage in services are particularly important because some families find it challenging to be part of what one might call the broader support network, for whatever reason. We say that the total revenue cost is four and a half million pounds to be met from transferring funds from the financial volatilities if necessary. The point that I would stress is that we have to have two things in order to deliver this. One, the desire, and two, the finances. The desire is for this council to say whether or not it wants to implement a programme that would go a long way to tackling combating disadvantage, that would also provide opportunities for children to catch up who've been out of the education system, starting from March through till September, maybe with no opportunities for education at home. And secondly, do we have the finance? And I think it's fair to say that it would go back a long, long way before this council underspent, sorry, didn't produce an underspend of less than five million pounds. Regularly and consistently, we underspend our budget. If that budget, if there were the circumstances that we didn't underspend the budget, then we would still be left with a significant amount of forty seven and a half, forty six and a half million pounds in our financial volatility reserve. We have to decide, I think, whether we're here to provide much needed valuable services at a time of unexpected difficulties, or whether we want to see ourselves essentially as a bank, stashing money away, never to be used. And I can't think, and I would in a sense challenge members of the council, to think of a situation where the expenditure of our reserves could be better justified. If we can't respond to the needs of the Lincolnshire people, and particularly children, I think it's fair to make a point as an aside, that Lincolnshire is an aging county, and we need to invest as much as we can afford into our young people. This motion presents us with the opportunity to do many things by making valuable use of the money that we have in either any future underspends or in our financial volatility reserve. I commend this to the council and look forward to a debate which either rejects this proposal, which I don't want to see, but I'd like to think that just on this occasion, it will be all part of support. Thank you.
Sorry, I thought I pressed it, I pressed it, but obviously didn't knock it off. Councillor Robin Ray.
Thank you, chairman. I'm very pleased to second this motion. I really want to focus on disadvantage by looking at real life in Lincolnshire. I've got a constituent, Chloe, and she gave permission for me to mention her name. She has a child with special educational needs, who has been denied his basic education by having his attendance slashed from five days to two. The child not only now loses basic education, but loses peer interaction, essential clinical exercise and physiotherapy sessions. Not only has his education suffered, but his quality of life has been impaired through no fault of his own. The mother then, because he's not attending the establishment, she's then asked to ration the home education time to the rest of the other three children and this child. So their education in turn has been diminished. And as Robert said in his preamble, children from disadvantaged backgrounds, when at home, often have problems accessing IT. Well, this is a real thing. I mean, we've seen the problem with IT today, haven't we? Not perfect, but certainly it does help where it is available. Can you imagine how continuing education can be delivered if you've got to share your IT? And many parents with low attainment levels, and that's a typical thing in my division, are unable to assist educationally during the lockdown. So they do need the help, the parents do, to help the children help get educated during this period. And I'm going to make it short today because in the motion, it spells it as it is. I was going to refer to the, to the, to the school meal provision during school holidays because that is a real issue. Why should the children, because of the parental income, be starved during the school shutdown? It's totally unchristian of us to even contemplate allowing that to happen. But anyhow, I need to ask for it because Marcus Rashford has stepped up to the parapet and he's lobbied Boris and he's agreed to give vouchers. And when I wrote this, I didn't know about that. So I do crave for forgiveness for not putting it in. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Robin. Right, I've got three people indicated to speak so far. Councillor Jackie Brockaway.
Thank you very much, chairman. This is the kind of motion that you really, really want to support because we all want to help the children. But I think it's very important to get right the way we do this. And I've got concerns here about the prescriptive nature and, you know, have the teachers and the various educators been consulted? You have to offer the help, not that you think is needed, but the help is actually needed by the people concerned. Now, the government is already talking about asking teachers to go into school over the summer, and there has been some resistance from the teachers and from the teachers' unions. And not because teachers are lazy, because I can assure you they're not, but because teachers find that time essential to prepare their work for the work, the lessons and the schemes of work for the coming year. And this September is going to be particularly crucial for them to be on top of it when they kick off at the start of the year. With regard to different children falling behind, you know, we mustn't underestimate the skills of the teachers. Teachers in this country and the comprehensive education and in different levels within different schools. So we've got the grammar, we've got the secondary system, huge range of ability in each class, and teachers are long skilled at dealing with that. With regard to the summer schools, now, summer schools have been in place for a long time, but I've got to worry about this particular thing here. We're talking about offering places three thirty to six P M. Fine in principle, but the problem with that is you're then going to keep children in school for nine hours a day, three days a week. Now, these are children. Children are tired by three thirty regardless of age. The teenagers are just as tired as the young ones, probably more so. And what we've got to be very careful for is to avoid turning help into a punishment. If you're going to keep them after school for three days a week, how are you going to get them home when they live in rural areas? You are going to be separating them from their school friends, and it marks out children who are disadvantaged. This sort of stuff is very, very sensitive, and it's got to be consulted. You've got to be ever so careful how you offer this sort of help. Now, with regard to the six months away from the teachers, there is a period away from the teachers. It's not a period of six months away from formal classes, though. Remember that we're talking about a six-week summer holiday, which would have been in place. We're also talking about a lot of the month of July and even part of June, when children will be in their sports days, their theatre trips, their activity weeks. So they are actually losing their socialisation and their activities with their friends as well. We've got to be careful about tying them to the desks. I think I'm a little bit worried about the way the numbers have been crunched here because I notice that they've been rounded to two thousand children, a cost of two million, two hundred and eighty thousand. And I think it is very important, I would want to go back to councillor Mrs Bradwell on this, because I know that she's got protocols in place already for helping the children. And help the children, yes, but can we be more careful about the way we do it in consultation with the educators and in consultation with a provision that is already in place? Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. The next person I've got indicated to speak is councillor Trisha Bradwell. Councillor Bradwell.
Okay, thank you, chairman. Yes, I just wanted to come in on this because, you know, I do agree with councillor Parker that children have missed out on their education, although lots of children have been home learning. And there are a number of children who haven't been home learning, but I do think, as I explained earlier in the day, that the billion pounds that the government has put in, there is, you know, national catch-up programmes, there's targeted tuition programmes for vulnerable children. And actually, these things will start to hit the children, and they'll start to learn, you know, more focused things on what they need to catch up on. So I do think that there are things in place. I think we have to acknowledge that parents didn't want their children at school when the virus, you know, marked April time. And a lot of parents still aren't happy that they feel that their children still could be vulnerable to the virus. So I think, you know, it is about encouraging parents to get their children back into school. But I do think a lot of this government money is coming down into schools and they will then make sure that the children who need the appropriate catching and focusing on whether it's maths or English, and it will be done at an appropriate pace for those children. And as I've said again before, the schools will be doing summer activities with the children who have, who have the pupil premium. There will be things happening. I don't believe that we need to be investing the council money. I think the government's given us money, and schools also have the pupil premium money to actually do these activities with the children who they think need it. I also have to say that we have given vulnerable children, we've given our looked-after children computers. All our looked-after children have got computers. Schools have then put a bid into government to get IT equipment for children. And also, schools have lent their, you know, secondary children, they have lent them some computers. So I think it's not ideal where we are, but to be honest, none of us wanted to be where we are with the pandemic. And I think over the next few months, we will report back to scrutiny about what schools are doing and what progress we're being making. Because I am very worried about children, and not just children in school. I'm very worried about young people who are at college, and are they going to be able to move on to get an apprenticeship and get a job? So I do think there's a lot for us to be looking at and scrutinising over the next six months about how we see our children moving forward and getting the the extra tuition that they need to help them learn to continue with their education and catch up. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Bradwell. I've got councillor Chris Brewis on my list next.
Thank you very much, chairman. As an ex-teacher, and Rob has said it, that we are on average ninety five percent underfunded for primary and two hundred and seventeen for secondary. And a number of us obviously have been doing what we can in our old areas to help people. Now, I never have been, I'm not, never will be amongst United's board, but Rashford's campaign, already being mentioned, just shows what can be done. And as an ex-teacher, the ones most affected and most in need after six months will be the ones most disadvantaged. But I think Jackie and Trish have really not, you know, hit the nail on the head. There's a need for national ongoing support from central government to make sure that this enormous shortfall is addressed. And the sad thing is that no government, as we know only too well, no government of any political persuasion in the last four decades has cared tons about rural Britain. But I remain to be convinced, and I'm not yet, that to eat into our own reserves partway through a crisis which may last two years or more is a bit unwise. What we actually need to do is to find a link into Rashford, Mr Chairman. That's what we need. I'm not sure who it is, but I'll keep my eyes peeled.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Brewis. Right, I've got councillor Marion Overton indicated to speak.
Thank you very much, chairman. I'm really pleased to see the motion because I think it brings to people's minds exactly just how difficult this has been for families and for children. The source should be nearly six months outside of a school environment and then to have to come in. I can see that's extremely difficult for people. I have been lobbied by some people locally who are concerned, especially if they have numbers of, you know, maybe five children, one in particular, of different ages, and they're working at the same time from home. And you can see how difficult that is for somebody. So all the help in the world that we've had from the television, you know, the BBC bite size and all, that's enormously helpful. But when you've got children working at different levels and you're trying to keep them all on track and do your job of work, I can see that it's bound to be extremely difficult. So I really applaud the sense behind this, bringing forward what we can. My question is, and it affects the way we think, certainly the governments, we've asked for money and I am hoping, and I thought some was coming through, but I am expecting some. But could we not have this as a fallback? So if the government money came through, then we'd just use that. But certainly, there's no guarantees at the moment, is there, from the government money? So I actually think we should at least have this as a fail-safe to make sure that we are at least providing this. When you read through what's on the list, you think, aren't we doing that? You know, it sounds so sensible and straightforward, but it would be hard to imagine that it's not, it's got to be provided. Lastly, my other question is about the rural section that's mentioned, there are five additional sessions for forty eight weeks. I'm not sure how many children that's for, or is it for, not quite sure what's behind that proposal. So I look forward to hearing a bit more. But certainly in principle, a really strong presentation and support from across the board in principle. Just to recognise that there may be other issues. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor Overton. I've got councillor Martin Hill, indicating leader, indicating to speak now. So over to you, Martin.
Well, thank you, chairman. And I think in the midst of all this, we've got to remember that all, most of the money which we used to receive to support schools has been taken away from us by government. And it's been quite clear that that is not, although we have some sort of vague overall sort of understanding of what we should try and do, but there's no real resources to do it. So we actually are currently spending more on sort of discretionary support for schooling than we have to. And I'm not, I think that's something we should be pleased of. And I certainly sympathise with the thought that, yes, we could use a rate, if you like, the contingency reserve. But I would point out that, I know I always say this, but particularly this year, we've got some issues. We know that we are going to overspend on our coronavirus allocation. We know that there's maybe some massive problems with homeschool transport in terms of finance and various other issues with care homes. We, you know, we don't know what extra money we're going to have to give to care homes. And of course, we massively don't know what's going to happen to our budget allocation next year. So I think we need to be extremely cautious as to not using this part of our reserves even once, even though it is only six million. I'll say only six million, that's a lot. I think it is fair to say that the government is supporting schools. And according to my calculation and information I've got, there's nearly two billion, two billion, billion with a B, pounds the government has made available for schools. A billion for Covid catch-up, six hundred and fifty million for a universal catch-up premium, which schools will spend, three hundred children, and another hundred and twenty million Covid summer food fund. So again, there has been substantial resources which have been allocated. And it's always best that that starts with the, with the schools, and they should work with the children. And they will know which children are potentially going to slip behind because they haven't had the support. I mean, personally, I think it's regrettable that more children haven't gone to school.
already. It's regrettable that some parents have chosen not to do that where they could. And I think it's regrettable that some teaching unions have been quite irresponsible in actually scaremongering and actually putting obstacles in the way of getting children educated. So I do sympathise with what councillor Parker is saying, but my advice as chairman of the portfolio for finance is probably not the time to spend this money. And at the same time, there is money coming in from government directly. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Martin. Right, I've got councillor Matthews indicating to speak. Come in.
Thank you, chair. I have something to do with this motion because clearly education has been disrupted across the whole country. However, as someone who's actually led national programmes and understands the infrastructure which is required to deliver these, the 7 million pounds would just fritter away unfortunately if we chose to use it. It wouldn't be used well because it can't be used well, because we would be having to set up a whole new structure and framework to deliver out of school education, something the government has already funded a national programme on, using key national partners. And we're simply not geared up to have the wherewithal to do that. We would end up with egg all over our face if we set out to do it because it is a well-intentioned programme, it's not doable, and it's the summer holidays. You can take a horse to water, but you cannot make it drink. The children would be better occupied elsewhere this summer. We make sure we get things right from September and keep our cash where it should be in reserve for future emergencies.
Okay, thank you for that. Just checking, I've got one more to speak. Let me see. Just bear with me a minute.
It's councillor Moore.
Councillor Moore? I couldn't, I've just got some initials, so I was trying to work out who that is. On my iPad, I only get the initials, so. Councillor Moore. Apologies.
Thank you, chairman, thank you. I just wanted to sort of provide support for the comments made by councillor Bradwell and councillor Hill. I think that whilst the intention of this motion is perfectly honourable, and I think we're all very concerned about the educational impact of the coronavirus and the mistime that a lot of our disadvantaged children are going to have from school. But I think councillor Hill's right to say that our responsibility for this is almost discretionary, that the academy schools will receive directly pupil premium, and they will be responsible for organising the extra support for their students. So whilst as a local authority, we have almost a monitoring responsibility for those children, it is a little bit questionable as to whether it falls on our lap to provide this. And at the moment, as councillor Overton suggested, we're waiting to hear back on whether there'll be additional money for schools to provide this. So it would be slightly premature to agree this motion today before we know in full the package of measures that the government are going to announce, which will be provided, assume, we assume, directly through schools themselves. So whilst I agree with the sentiment, I think the detail lacks clarity and it hasn't considered the overall government measures that will be coming in place.
Thank you, thank you for that. Right, not got anybody else indicating to speak, so what I'm going to do is move back to councillor Parker to sum up. Rob?
Sure, thank you. One of the things about Labour motions is that they're rarely, if at all, ever rejected out of hand. They're dismissed with faint praise. And that's the point. The dismissal by councillors is always, it's never the right time to spend money. Well, it never is the right time, never, ever with a Labour motion is it the right time. So that's a sort of perennial, hardy annual that keeps on cropping up. We're accused of having honourable intentions but not knowing enough about the detail. I think we've got an excellent children's services director. And I want to make it clear that the information and support we have is unrivalled. So, you know, this idea of it being premature, well, I suppose if we had our next council meeting in September, by which time the summer would have passed, then it would have been too late. So when would be a good time? Given the statement made by Gavin Williamson, which was about withdrawing of preschool meals, which was overturned immediately as soon as, as has been said, Marcus Rashford got involved in huge public, simply he was there, I wouldn't necessarily trust the Secretary of State for Education to do anything good much about the potential for funding schools. So in a sense, there's a number of things that need challenging because the point is that we have funds and we have Lincolnshire children and we could, if we had the willingness, support those schools and children and families who are in need at this particular time. Now, it wouldn't have been so bad if some of this had been picked up and run with, but at the moment, I don't know what's going to happen between now and September. Presumably, extra spending in the budget, I don't know how that would be managed without discussion at an executive level. But it just seems to me that we are facing a problem. That problem will not go away. It won't be helped at all by anything this council's doing at the moment. So we're relying on a promise and a maybe from the government that does not seem as though it's committed much to combating disadvantage particularly at this important time. It's disappointing to hear applause but no support. But nevertheless, we put it before the council, the council will vote and people of Lincolnshire will see the difference between the aspirations of those that support the motion and those that say, well, I'm sorry, but we'd like to, but, 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 as much as I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Right, we'll move on then to a roll call vote, which is, so I'm going to hand over to Nigel to conduct that now. Over to you, Nigel.
Thank you, chairman. I will now conduct the roll call vote. I will call out councillors' names in alphabetical order. Members are requested to only switch on their microphone and clearly state for, against or abstain when their name is called. Councillor Adams.
Against.
Councillor Aaron. Councillor Ashton.
Against.
Councillor Mrs Austin.
Against.
Councillor Bowles.
For.
Councillor Mrs Boquet.
Against.
Councillor Mrs Bradwell.
Against.
Councillor Brailsford.
Against.
Councillor Brewis.
Against.
Councillor Bridges.
Against.
Councillor Mrs Brockway.
Against.
Councillor Brooks.
Against.
Councillor Bootroyd.
Against.
Councillor Corey.
Against.
Councillor Clark.
For.
Councillor Cooper.
Against.
Councillor Cullen.
For.
Councillor Davy.
Against.
Councillor Davies. Councillor Davies? Davies? Councillor Dobson.
Against.
Councillor Fido.
Against.
Councillor Fleetwood.
Against.
Councillor Folkes.
Against.
I believe councillor Griggs is left. Councillor Griggs?
No, he's left.
Oh, he's still here, isn't he? Councillor Griggs. Councillor Crocock.
Against.
Councillor Hagues.
Against.
Councillor Hill.
Against.
Councillor Key.
For.
Councillor Lawton.
Against.
Councillor Marfleet.
Against.
Councillor Matthews.
Against.
Councillor Moore.
Against.
Councillor McNally.
Against.
Councillor Newton.
Against.
Councillor Mrs Overton.
For.
Councillor Oxbey.
Against.
Councillor Parker.
For.
Councillor Pepper.
Against.
Councillor Perrott and Williams, I believe councillor Perrott and Williams is left. Councillor Mrs Rawlins.
I'm back, mate.
Sorry, I thought you'd left councillor poll. Councillor Poll.
Against.
Councillor Mrs Rawlins.
Against.
Councillor Christopher Reed.
Against.
Councillor Robert Reed.
Against.
Councillor Renshaw.
For.
Councillor Rowe.
Against.
Councillor Skinner.
He's left, chairman.
Yes. Councillor Mrs Sneath.
Against.
Councillor Spratt.
Against.
Councillor Stokes.
Against.
Councillor Storer.
Against.
Councillor Strangle.
Against.
Councillor Mrs Talbot.
Against.
Councillor Thompson.
Against.
Councillor Trollope Loo.
Against.
Councillor Turner. Councillor Whittington.
Against.
Councillor Mrs Woolley.
Against.
Councillor Linda Wotton.
Against.
Councillor Ray Wotton.
Against.
Councillor Worth.
Against.
That motion is lost, chairman.
Right, okay, the motion is lost. I declare that the motion is lost. Okay, that brings us nearly to the conclusion of the meeting. I've just got one more thing to do. I've been asked on behalf of councillor Mark Whittington to thank all members on behalf of Grantham and district residents for so much support in the motion referring to Grantham Hospital. So do you want to add anything, Mark? I'll allow you if you want to. No? Okay.
Councillor Davies has added his vote, chairman, to the last vote. He's voted against.
Right.
All right, Mr Chairman, I was having, as I'm probably as good a technology. Thank you. Yes, it's just, it's just to thank all the members for unanimously supporting the motion on Grantham Hospital this afternoon. Thank you, Mr Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Right, that is the conclusion of the meeting. The meeting's ended. So I'd normally wish you all a safe journey home, but most of you are already there, so off you go. And so thank you for your forbearance today because it's been a bit of a long meeting. And thank you for your forbearance with me as well on the first meeting in the chair. So thank you all, have a good weekend.